The commission's questions and when staff has completed their presentation on two of the items we'll be doing, we will be having a public hearing and I will open that hearing. We gain a lot of insight from the information and viewpoints that the public provides. Your input is very welcomed and appreciated. If you wish to speak tonight when the public hearing is open, you'll be recognized by me and we'll go by in order of the list that you signed in. When you're, when you come to the lectern right over here, please provide us with your name and spell any uncommon names so that the record will accurately reflect your comments and provide your address. We ask that you keep your comments relevant to the matter being discussed and that you direct your comments to the members of the commission and not to anybody else who has been speaking. And in the interest of time, you'll, you will have three minutes to speak. We want to be fair to everyone, so everyone will get their three minutes to speak. However, note that we will begin the substantive, excuse me, we will begin the substantive part of the agenda with the information item again. That's the information item that's on oil and gas regulation and will not have a public hearing on that item. Okay, to begin the substantive part of our agenda, Anne Johnson, she's our director of the Bertha Community Development Department. She'll introduce Mike Foot of the Foot Law Firm who provide on Zoom an informational presentation on oil, on the proposed oil and gas regulations. Director Johnson.
Chair Anderson and members of the Planning Commission. The Town Board of Trustees over the past few years have been working on amendments to the town's oil and gas regulations. These regulations have been changing as the State Department of Energy Resources also has changed some of their rulemaking. And we wanted to be consistent with their rulemaking. And so Mike Foot was retained, he is an attorney. And retained by the Town Board of Trustees and has been working with them on these regulations. Because the regulations do impact chapter 30, which is a land use code. We wanted to bring it to you as a courtesy to know high level what those changes will be. It is a project of the Town Board of Trustees and they will be having their second hearing on this on July 9th. And so we just thought it would be good to bring it to you as an informational moment. So Terry, are we able to show his slides yet? And Mike, did you want to give an introduction, a better introduction of who you are?
Well, thanks Anne and members of the Planning Commission, thank you very much for having me give this presentation and I'm assuming some Q and A, there'll be some time to do that. I, I, I very much also appreciate you allowing me to appear virtually. I've had a medical issue for a couple of weeks now that's pretty much made it so I can't really leave the house unfortunately. So I'm kind of propped up here to do the presentation, which I'm happy to do, but I really appreciate the option and appreciate your attention and, and we'll be happy to take questions. So Anne mentioned, I'm an attorney, I do energy environmental law, former legislator. I have my own law firm and was, I was happy to be retained by the Town of Bertha to help do a rewrite of the Bertha oil and gas regulations, which I'll talk about in a little more detail, is consistent with many other localities doing the same thing since a bill passed at the legislature in 2019, allowing the towns to, to do that. So, and I can't see a, my slideshow up there, if that's the intent, I can always pull it up, I think on my screen and share screen if, if that would be helpful.
If you could please do that, we are having some technical difficulties, the system did crash just a few minutes ago. So if you were able to pull yours up, that would help us out.
All right, are you seeing it right now?
We are, thank you, Mike.
Okay. Great. Um, okay. So I'm assuming you all can hear me okay, you can see the slideshow, please let me know if that's otherwise. And I will get started here with, with an overview of the process. And, and some of the regulations, I, I'm assuming that you all have had access to the latest red line regulations that will be presented to the trustees here on July 9th, as Anne mentioned. But, so I'm not going to go through that word for word by any stretch because it's about 50 pages worth and you probably don't want to hear that. But I will give, as you see from this outline, a kind of a brief overview of some state and local law changes that have brought us here. Then I will talk about a summary or give a summary of the process that we've had with the Board of Trustees. It's been, I guess, kind of a long process, maybe longer than expected, but we are pretty close to the end, I suspect, which is a good thing, I think, for everybody. And then I'll do some summaries of some of the sections that, that I think may have the most interest amongst yourselves as well as the folks in Bertha. Again, my intent is not to go over every single section in a lot of detail, but just give a summary, but happy to go into detail later in Q and A, if that's what you would like to do. So, um, I mentioned there was a, a bill that passed in 2019, the Colorado State Legislature passed Senate Bill 19 dash 181, which was a real sea change for oil and gas regulations within the state of Colorado as well as localities. Um, what it led to was a revamping of the then Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission. It has since changed its name to the Colorado Energy and Carbon Management Commission back after the 2023 legislative session. But the then Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission had a certain structure within the Oil and Gas Act, it had a certain mission. And Senate Bill 19 181 changed around the mission to make sure that the protection of public health, safety, welfare, the environment and wildlife was its primary consideration when deciding whether or not to grant or deny oil and gas applications for new drilling as well as regulation of existing drilling. There have been a number of rulemakings since Senate Bill 19 dash 181 passed, many of them major, even multi-year type of rulemakings. The first is the mission change, the so-called mission change rulemaking, which really was a big and involved rulemaking for the then COGCC. There have been a number of other rulemakings, including for, to revamp the financial assurances system. And there's one that's just started up now about cumulative impacts. And there's been several in between. So there's been a lot of activity since 2019 when it comes to the state. Not just the now Energy and Carbon Management Commission, but also the Air Quality Control Commission connected to the Department of Public Health and Environment. They've had several rulemakings that have dealt with oil and gas on the state level as well. So one other thing that Senate Bill 19 181 did, which I'm sure would be of supreme importance to you all, would be the fact that it made clear that local governments can treat oil and gas applications like they would any other land use application. Prior to the inaction of Senate Bill 181, there had been a number of disputes as well as lawsuits about the scope of local government power to regulate the above ground and land use aspects of oil and gas operations. Senate Bill 19 181 made it very clear that local governments can do so. Again, above ground, not below ground, but above ground types of land use impacts from oil and gas operations. And as you can see from this map, there are a number of local jurisdictions that have redone their, their regulations since 2019. I've listed probably not all of them here, but a pretty good sample of those that have, obviously Bertha has decided to do so. Loveland has decided to do so, they're in the process as well, Laramie County went through the process. So a number of jurisdictions that are close to Bertha have also decided to go through a revamp to make sure their local regulations are up, up to par and that they can regulate the above ground consequences and, and rules for oil and gas regulations. So the local practice before Senate Bill 19 181 was mostly hands off, mostly just referring to the state. Although, as I said, there were some local jurisdictions that wanted to go further, but there was litigation, there were court cases. And ultimately Senate Bill 19 181 clarified that local governments can do that. So the practice after Senate Bill 19 181 is basically a concurrent practice in jurisdictions that want it to be this way. The state has their process where they go through applications and decide whether or not to approve or deny new oil and gas applications. And local governments, if they choose to do so, have the same kind of thing. So an oil and gas operator that wants to start or put in a new oil and gas location or operation has to get, has to go through the process through the state as well as get approval from the local government and go through their process. So oil and gas development continues along the Northern Front Range, even after Senate Bill 19 181, despite predictions otherwise from the industry and others. These red dots represent existing oil and gas locations, the blue on the map represents the Town of Bertha. And you'll see there are some red dots from existing wells that are in the eastern part of the town there. But nothing new over the last several years, although that could change, of course, at, at any time, if and when these regulations pass. But as I show here on the left side of the slide, Bertha's current regulations were adopted in 2017. That was under the, the, the prior, you know, before Senate Bill 19 181 where there was just a lot of deference typically given by local governments to the state about what kind of conditions new oil and gas operations would operate. And so it was seen after Senate Bill 19 181 and what other local jurisdictions were doing that Bertha's 2017 regulations had just been outdated by new legislation and new practice by local governments. And some of the areas where those 2017 regulations were outdated included setbacks and, and reverse setbacks, otherwise known as reciprocal setbacks. So just to kind of define that setbacks are when you put in a new oil and gas location, how far away that is from an existing home or an existing business. And reverse setbacks is the opposite where you have an existing oil and gas location, but you're putting in new homes or new businesses and how far away you should put those things. You know, this general public health, safety and welfare provisions certainly needed to be updated. Not only because of new legislation, but also because technology changes quickly. And there's new standards that are out there and continue to evolve about making oil and gas operations less impactful and more protective. The cumulative impacts of oil and gas operations is something that was not addressed in 2017. And now, as I said, there's actually a rulemaking that's going on at the ECMC to address the possible cumulative impacts of multiple oil and gas operations. Things like noise, emissions, BMP stand for best management practices, which is industry parlance for extra protections that are put into place. I don't know if they're necessarily the best management practices, but that's what they're called. So we'll just refer to them as BMPs. And then financial assurances, which are guarantees, you know, cash or bond guarantees that the industry puts down or the operator puts down in order to make sure that there's enough money and the operator has enough money to, to plug and remediate the site once it's all said and done. Typically, you know, within 20 or 30 years after it first starts operating so that they just don't leave the scene and, and leave an oil and gas operation that is not being cleaned up. Fees and penalties was another area where the 2017 regulations were, I guess outdated or far behind the current practice. And so those have been updated and I'll go into a little more detail about that as well. So, um, we've talked amongst the, the trustees and myself about what has been called kind of the Goldilocks scenario for the new regulations that are being proposed. The Goldilocks scenario really, I guess to paraphrase it is, they want the regulations to be just right. They want the regulations to be protective and taking some of the most protective examples from other local jurisdictions that have been recently enacted. They want the regulations to address specific issues that have been brought to their attention by constituents as well as issues that they care about. They, they wanted the regulations to pay attention to some of the more contentious issues that occur with new oil and gas development that we've seen in other jurisdictions that have had recent oil and gas development. And they want to make sure that the new regulations fit into existing town processes to the extent possible. They've also made it clear that they would like to make sure that the regulations are on solid ground, that there's precedent from other local jurisdictions as well as, and/or what the state is doing. So basically they want to, to, they've wanted to have examples from other jurisdictions that are, are protective and, and you know, do a survey of those and take those and try to put them into the Bertha code to make sure that they're protected. But they, I guess, don't want to go out on the plank too far or on the limb too far and risk, I guess, blowback or, you know, something similar from, from the industry. So that's kind of the Goldilocks scenario that we've been operating under with the Board of Trustees. So I'll, don't feel like you have to read this slide. I'm putting it up here as an example of what we've done in order to try to achieve that Goldilocks scenario, which is that we've done a study through prior memoranda as well as discussion about what other select local jurisdictions have been, have done with their regulations. And what we've looked at, uh, this is labeled COGCC because it's from a memo that was taken before they changed their name. But we took a look at the state regulation in a particular area, then we took a look at some, you know, I guess comparison jurisdictions. City and County Broomfield was a comparison jurisdiction that we settled on. The Town of Erie was a comparison jurisdiction, Laramie County, and then also the Town of Superior for different reasons, just to take a look at what they've done and really study that. And use that to inform what kind of regulations should go into the, the Bertha new regulations. And so if you look back at some of the memos that we had done, there's charts like this all around for lots of different types of regulations. This one has to deal with setbacks of new oil and gas locations from existing buildings. But there's many that include public health, safety and welfare regulations, et cetera. So the, what we've had in, in many prior drafts and it continues on to the, the current draft is an outline of new section 13, or I'm sorry, 30 dash 11 dash 101 through 30 dash 11 dash 109. And so you see here, we first deal in 101 with just a general overall purpose and authorities outline, and we apply it to existing facilities within Bertha. And you can see details of that if you'd like to under 101. Under 102, we have definitions that are specific to oil and gas operations, but also some cross references to existing Bertha code. Just to make sure that we can stay consistent with existing Bertha code when that's possible. But in many cases, existing Bertha code did not have specific oil and gas definitions, so we put that in section 102. Section 103 deals with the setbacks issue, as I mentioned before. Otherwise known as location restrictions for new oil and gas facilities from existing buildings like residences. Section 104 deals with the reverse setbacks or reciprocal setbacks, as I mentioned. So like if there's existing oil and gas operations, how far do you have to put away, put new homes or new structures from those existing operations? 105 is, uh, it deals with really the plethora of public health, safety, welfare, environmental and wildlife regulations. It's the most extensive section by far, it goes into quite a bit of detail about the plans the operator need to submit that would sufficiently protect public health, welfare, environment, et cetera. 106 is where we turn this into the, what, what's on the ground and practically speaking, that works for the Town of Bertha that, you know, fits into the, the current Bertha processes as best as we can, so that we're not creating something totally new out of whole cloth. 107 deals with insurance requirements as well as financial assurances. 108 deals with inspections of the facilities by the operators, by the Town of Bertha, enforcement provisions and new fines. And then 109 deals with pre-drilling seismic operations, which can accompany any kind of, or precede any kind of new oil and gas location application. Okay, so as I said, I'm not going to go through all these in any great detail, I'm just going to highlight a few things because they're the ones that come up most often in discussion. But what we have currently for section 103, which is the setback section is on, on the first level, we have zoning restrictions, we have it so that, that new oil and gas operations cannot occur in, in any zone, including residential areas, but they can occur in agricultural or industrial zones. This is consistent with what some other local jurisdictions do, not all, but some. And so that, those are in the current draft of the regulations. We have a 2,000 foot setback for a new oil and gas location that, that could be located within an agricultural or an industrial zone. We have 150 foot setback for flow lines and other transfer lines. So these are underground lines that are associated with the oil and gas location. And so, and there's a number of other things about location restrictions as well, but those are kind of the broad highlights there. And then getting into reverse setbacks in section 104, we have it set into tiers because it's commonly known that the pre-production activities as well as maybe the first year after production begins are the most impactful to the local area. That's not to say that production activities are not impactful, but they're not recognized as as impactful. And, and then we have, at the end of the day, hopefully the well is plugged and abandoned. It's not as impactful, but also plug, plugging can fail, it needs to be replugged sometimes, there still are some, some impacts there. So you can see we have it set where it's a, a longer reverse setback during the first period, which is the pre-production, like the drilling, the fracking, the flowback. And ultimately, you know, getting the hydrocarbon out of the ground plus one year is a 2,000 foot reverse setback. And then the, during the production period, which can run anywhere between another 10 to 30 years typically. The reverse setback is reduced to 500 feet. And then once the well is plugged and abandoned, it's a 250 foot setback. Mainly because if the plug needs to be replaced or if something goes wrong with the plug or the, the location after it's plugged, which can happen, then there's enough room to get in and fix it and there's not some kind of structure on top of it, which can complicate matters quite a bit. Okay, section 105, as I said, is really the, the meat of the public health, safety, welfare, environmental and some wildlife regulations. We do kind of a procedural cross-reference to the use by special review section, that's 33 106, which goes with the procedure that, that the town usually requires developers to go through, developers of any kind of development, not just oil and gas. And so we've preserved that procedure, we haven't made the procedure any different for oil and gas, it's just another type of, of, of application that's filed in order to kind of make it so that we're not reinventing the wheel here, at least process wise. Uh, we have cross-references to section 30 11 106, which deals with a development agreement, which again, as I understand, is something that's fairly common within the Town of Bertha. So a development agreement would include really a contract that the operator would go through and say, we agree to adhere to certain standards. The standards include what we said in our plan in section 105, as well as any additional public health, safety, welfare protections that are put into place, as well as things like transportation impact fees and inspection fees, review fees. So it's really putting in the process into a development agreement or a contract that the operator has to abide by, which again, subject to correction, of course, I understand is fairly common within what the town already does. And section 105 again deals, this is just a little summary, it deals with everything from the requirement for alternative location analyses to wildlife protections and everything in between. Again, it's pretty extensive and it's also based on, or it's at least informed by what many other local jurisdictions are doing, particularly the comparison jurisdictions that I went over before, meaning Broomfield and Laramie County, Erie, Superior. And there might be another one that I'm forgetting. Okay, 106 again was, you know, the, the way that we tried to work this into the current Bertha process. Really what it calls for is agreements that are in section 105, which I'm just going to call regulatory baselines. But also it provides flexibility for more protective measures that can be put into place. So as with everything, technology and oil and gas changes pretty consistently. And so we wanted to make sure that if and when these regulations are enacted here in 2024, that if a new application comes in and say 2027 or 2028, there's not the necessity to try to come in and redo the regulations every time that there is a, a new technology that makes things more protective. So it gives the, the town and the board the flexibility to impose new quote unquote best management practices or other conditions of approval that match with current technology and current protective practices whenever that application may come in. Again, it cross-references some of the current procedures in the Town of Bertha, just for simplicity sake. And it also accounts for, creates the need for a memorandum of understanding, which I understand is somewhat similar to development agreement, but a binding agreement of what the operator will agree to go through if it's, if and when its permit is or its application is approved by the town. The other thing that we did was, and again, this is consistent with what some other local jurisdictions are doing, is that the cost of review, including an application fee is borne by the operator. So obviously the Town of Bertha doesn't have a ton of resources. My understanding is it doesn't have a, a, say, an oil and gas staff like say Well County does, or some of the bigger jurisdictions do around the state. And so there may be a desire for the town to retain outside experts to help review the application. Those costs would be borne by the operator and that's made clear here in section 106. So it's not requiring, the town would not be required unless it wanted to, of course, to hire someone full-time to do it. But the town would probably be well advised to have experts that are available that can help review an application if and when it comes in to make sure that it complies with all the current best management practices and, and what's in the current regulations. Section 107 deals with, just to make sure that there's insurance, adequate insurance. This is taken from other jurisdictions, including Broomfield, which has really the most extensive regulation on adequate insurance for operations to occur within the jurisdiction. With financial assurances, it calls for a $100,000 bond on each location. And if there's more than one well on a location, then it's a $100,000 bond for each well on that location. This is a little bit higher than the standard that's required by the Energy and Carbon Management Commission. However, there is plenty of information out there, including during the rulemaking from the ECMC that would support a $100,000 bond to, to make sure that the site is adequately cleaned up. At the end of the day, and it's not just out there if the company goes bankrupt or if they just leave the scene without cleaning it up. With inspection enforcement and fines, we have a provision that operators shall actually, you know, inspect their facilities, that's not unusual. And report the inspections to the town, the results of those inspections. It allows the town, if it desires to do so, to inspect the facilities itself. And also to charge the operator for those inspections. So if the and also to, um, charge the operator for those inspections. So if the town wants to find um, some kind of expert help in order to conduct those inspections, it can do so. And the operator would need to pay for that, assuming that it's a reasonable expense. And then there's also enforcement provisions that are more in line with what the state does, as well as what other local jurisdictions do, which is, um, calls for a penalty of up to fifteen thousand dollars per violation per day, um, which again is not unusual. The state has that for the most serious violations and other local jurisdictions have that kind of, uh, uh, penalty as well. I believe the current Berthad code is something like, uh, a two thousand dollar violation per day, per violation per day. And so this just puts it up to what the somewhat standard practice is amongst the state and other local jurisdictions for any kind of violations. Okay, um, I guess I'll open it up for any kind of questions. I hope that was a, um, a good enough summary, but not too far into the weeds. I guess we'll find out when we hear your questions, but, um, again, I'm happy to, to be able to, uh, have presented to you and, and happy to have any further discussion as necessary. So thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I may also introduce Erin Smith, the town attorney is also attending by Zoom. And she has been involved with these regulations from the early onset as well. So if there are any questions for her, she is available.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin, for being here, Ms. Commissioners, do you have questions of Mr. Foot?
Thanks, Mike. That was really informative. Um, um, and I know you made a point of saying that the regulations are meant to strike this kind of Goldilocks zone, um, but just in your professional opinion, would you characterize this update as being more or less restrictive to oil and gas development, Berthad? And kind of in a similar vein, would you say that other communities that have impacted, enacted these kinds of regulations have seen big swings in development, either increases or decreases?
What I would say is there are a number of provisions in the current, um, proposal that are, um, what should be can, or could be considered as being more protective than what the state has in place. Um, but a number of local jurisdictions have done that. And, uh, that's been one feature of, um, the, the regulatory regime since Senate Bill one eighty-one is that the state has provided a, what they consider to be a protective floor. But a number of local jurisdictions, including those that we've compared ourselves to, have gone above and beyond that. Um, setbacks is one example where, you know, the state has, um, between a five hundred foot and a two thousand foot setback. Many local jurisdictions have gone more restrictive than that, what they consider to be more protective. The Berthad regulations do that as well, where it's a two thousand foot setback within certain zones. Um, and there is an informed consent exception in one of the latest drafts, but, um, not as many exemptions or exceptions as the state has. So I would say, um, you know, it's, the, there, it's been a bit à la carte, you know, there's, it's, I, I wouldn't say like every single regulation is more protective than the state. There's some that are many, that are very close to the state. There's some that are more protective. There's also some, a few local regulations that have gone farther than what's proposed here. For example, Arapaho County, um, I guess at the end of twenty twenty-three, uh, enacted in some cases a three thousand foot setback for new oil and gas locations. Um, so, um, by and large, I would say the new regulations are protective. They go farther than the state in many cases. Um, they probably go as far as the more protective regulations in the comparison jurisdictions, but they don't go as far as other jurisdictions in every single instance. And I don't remember the second part of your question. If you could kind of refresh my memory.
Oh, sure. Uh, just whether you've seen comparative, uh, cities with similar, um, regulations, whether they've experienced really big changes in their oil and gas development after enacting those regulations.
Um, I haven't kept track of the numbers, but, um, Adams County would be one example where they put in new regulations. Um, I wouldn't say they're as restrictive as the ones that are proposed here in Berthad. Um, but they were certainly more protective and restrictive than, um, what was in place beforehand. And they've still seen a number of new applications. Um, I, I believe right now Adams County is the, um, if I recall correctly, is the, um, second highest producing county of oil and gas in the state behind Well County. So they certainly haven't seen anything fall off the cliff. As far as numbers go, I couldn't tell you for sure. Um, there are a number of jurisdictions that have put in new regulations since Senate Bill one eighty-one that have had no applications. Um, Boulder County, City of Boulder, uh, City and County of Broomfield have not had any applications since then. I'm not sure they would have anyway, but they have not had any. And, but there have been some like Arapaho County that have put in new regulations that, um, currently there's a number of new applications that are pending in front of Arapaho County. Again, I'm not aware of numbers, but um, the applications have continued. It's just that, uh, the conditions of the approved applications have been more protective, I think, in general.
Sure. Thanks. That was helpful.
Hi, Mike. Um, thank you for your presentation. I do have a question with respect to, um, these wells, once they are abandoned or plugged. Um, you mentioned that there's a bond that the developer or owner operator has to put up. How long is that bond in effect for?
It's in effect until the well is plugged and the site is remediated to the satisfaction of the state and/or the local authorities. So, um, if the well's in production for thirty years and it's, you know, the decision is to shut it down once it's actually plugged, um, appropriately, and once the site is remediated, again, to the satisfaction of the locals and the state, then that bond is returned.
Okay. And, and do you see failures, um, with those plugs, um, down the road years after the well has been plugged?
Uh, yes, there have been occasional failures. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of the nature of things. I mean, it's a, it's, it's, um, uh, you know, if you look at wells that were plugged back in, say nineteen eighty-five, it's inevitable there was going to be some kind of a failure for, you know, anything mechanical that was done in nineteen eighty-five that has to hold till today. There have been some instances where there have been failures, um, which is, yeah, why I think it's advisable to give enough space to try to correct those if those become known. It's hard to say, you know, I mean, the rules have gotten better for plugging since nineteen eighty-five, for example, but, um, it's a mechanical thing and mechanical things can fail no matter what they are, um, on occasion.
Okay. And then who's on the hook for that? If that plug fails and after the bond has been returned?
Well, um, that typically what's happened is that the state has had, um, kind of an emergency fund that it uses for the, uh, for the plugging or replugging when that happens. Uh, that's been the typical response as far as I know. Um, at that point in time, the bond has been returned and the, the, often the company is long gone. So if the state does have a fund that it uses for kind of emergency environmental protection that it draws from fees from the oil and gas industry currently that it can use for these types of things.
Mike, did you have any questions?
Hi, 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 Mike. I have a couple of questions. Um, and again, thank you for being here with us. We appreciate that you're with us even on Zoom. I know you, that you had some complications, so we appreciate that you're still willing to talk to us.
Thank you.
First question, and I don't know if this is, this is out of the scope or not, if this is something that's covered in state law or not, but, um, do these rigs impose any impact fees to, you know, for things like roads and other kind of like infrastructure impacts?
Uh, yes, that's part of, um, section one oh six, and, uh, it's kind of part of the development plan and/or the memorandum of understanding where, uh, the town staff, uh, presumably would, would sit down with the operator and, and hammer out an agreement about what those impacts would be. And then the operator would be on the hook to pay those types of impacts.
So they would pay, they would, there's no set amount that they have to pay? It's something that's negotiated?
Right, right. Because it's really hard to say, you know, ahead of time what those impacts would be, but, uh, it would, it would be something that would, that would be hammered out between the, 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 the staff and the operator. And you know, at the end of the day, if there's not an agreement, the, the permit doesn't have to be granted. So really the, the town's going to have the final say on that.
And Madam Chair, and if I may, so part of the development review process would be like a traffic impact study and other studies that would illustrate what those material impacts are to town infrastructure. And so the town may enter into a long-term road maintenance agreement that would include, you know, grading or paving, things like that at the developer's expense. Also, at the time of building permit, um, assessments are made for wear and tear on roads and, and other items. So those assessments would be made at the same time.
And that's what I was getting at, because I, from what I've read, there, particularly with, with fracking, that there can be a lot of, a lot of truck traffic at, in impact roads. So that's kind of what I was getting at.
And there, um, Mr. Foot has also written in, um, regulations regarding seismic testing and what that require, what those requirements would be when a company would even be interested to come to determine if the geology would yield any kind of financial, um, benefit to the, to the production.
One more question. And again, I'm not sure if this is in scope or if this is something that's covered by state law, but, is there something in the regulations about disclosure to, um, local residents or, um, homeowners that might be within a certain, uh, I don't know, number of feet, you know, I know.
Um, there, there are those regulations within the state or within a certain number of feet, um, like if there's a residence within two thousand feet, but that probably won't apply here because, um, unless there's informed consent, um, you know, the regulations here for Berthad, if adopted as currently drafted, are pretty clear that you can't go less than two thousand feet. So if I'm remembering correctly, I think there's notification provisions that are within current code that we've cross-referenced that would occur for any kind of development, but now I can't recall exactly what that code says. So I apologize for not having that specific answer.
I was, and I was just, I was thinking about once, let's say that the well gets plugged and there is, you know, with fracking, the, there can be things, tunnels and that kind of things that go, that go under the, under the ground. And I didn't know if, as things are built up closer, if there would be some type of disclosure to someone who is buying, let's say a house.
There's nothing affirmative in there about like disclosure to those that may be buying the house. Um, however, you know, the, the, the operator would, would always need to uh, provide locations, um, to the town. And then what the town does with that information, I guess, is, is up to the town, but um, there, there was nothing affirmative in the regulations that require an operator to get in touch with a prospective home buyer um, about the facility that, you know, was once there or anything along those lines.
Yeah. So if they're going to be drilling and number one, Berthad doesn't have a lot of the geology that it would be rich in the resource. So if they would be drilling a horizontal well, they don't have to inform the individuals, I believe, that are under or over that horizontal well. Everything that from the town's perspective is a surface disturbance at the site and the state regulates subsurface.
Because I, I thought that was state, I don't know if that was kind of state regulation or state law, and I couldn't remember.
Right, yeah. Anything above ground is subject to concurrent uh, regulation between the state and the locals. Anything below ground is exclusive to the, uh, state.
Thank you, Mr. Foot. Any other questions, Commissioners? Thanks again. We really appreciate you being with us.
Yeah, thanks a lot for having me. And, uh, of course, happy to have further discussions or appear again if, if that's your desire. And, um, I appreciate your time here this evening.
Okay, so are we ready to move on? All right. Our second substantive item on our agenda tonight is the proposed short-term rental regulations. And as I stated earlier, tonight we have two items coming up on the agenda, um, for which we'll have a public hearing. And to recap that process, um, remember that the, uh, Berthad Community Development Staff will introduce each item. Um, and then after the presentation, the public hearing will be open. Anyone wishing to speak will, again, approach the lectern here, um, state their name, spell any uncommon names for the record, then state your address. At that point, at this point, Tom, um, a senior planner with the Berthad Community Development Department, um, Tom Hildebrand will present the staff report on the proposed short-term rental regulations.
I believe we're continuing to have some technical difficulties with our podium. So is, I don't know if it's working there. So you, I mean, do ask, you all bear with me. I am going to log into Zoom. And then I'm going to share my presentation that way. So I do thank you all for your patience.
Thanks for being willing to do it this way, because I, I know our system is a little finicky.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for your patience. So before I jump in, um, I did give you a document this evening, um, just before you came to your, your positions. It is an email that we received, uh, just this afternoon from a community member who wanted to comment on the draft of regulations. So for the record, you have a copy of that. We've also given one to Terry for the, the minutes. Um, but just so that you have that. And certainly at the end of, um, my presentation, I can answer any questions you have regarding public comment or anything else, of course, in the packet. Okay. So again, for the record, Tom Hildebrand, I'm the senior planner. This request is to present proposed regulations for short-term rentals amending chapter thirty, section one, which is definitions and section three zoning of the Berthad municipal code. So more specifically, amend the town of Berthad development code by adding a new definition for short-term rentals and updated definitions for bed and breakfast found in section one, section three. Revis the use tables found in section three, which include zoning district and process requirements. And add new specific standards found in section three, including standards that apply to all short-term rentals. To provide a little background on short-term rentals in the town of Berthad at this time, as the planning commission may be aware, the town development code articulates allowable uses in the zoning chapter. And only those uses listed in the code are allowed in the zone district indicated. If a use is not listed in the code as principal use or conditional use, the use is not permitted. So a, a short-term rental is generally defined as a dwelling unit rented to guests for short-term lodging, which is thirty days or less, when not occupied by the owner or the operator. As, as currently stated, a short-term rental is, is unlisted in the town development code and therefore is not currently allowed. The development code currently defines and allows bed and breakfast use in certain zoning districts. A bed and breakfast is defined as an establishment operated in a private residence or portion thereof, which provides temporary accommodations to overnight guests for a fee and which is occupied by the operator of such establishment. So as the demand for second homes and short-term rentals continues to grow, many jurisdictions have developed programs and regulations to manage short-term rentals and achieve positive outcomes. While short-term rentals provide options for visitors and owners, short-term rentals could impact the neighborhoods in which they are located. Some of the more commonly expressed issues related to short-term rentals consistently expressed by community members include parking, loss of sense of community and noise, amongst others which are listed on the screen before you. The town has received feedback on short-term rentals consistent with what other communities are hearing. Following discussions with staff regarding the benefits and common issues, the town board of trustees has decided to move forward with allowing short-term rentals within the town and requested the development of a set of standards to ensure the health and safety of renters while managing impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. The regulations contained in the public hearing draft found in your agenda packet address many of the common issues addressed here, which were discussed with the town board uh, during multiple work sessions over the course of the last few months. So just so that you are aware, many northern Colorado communities, uh, currently administer short-term rental regulations, and that includes Fort Collins, Timneth, Estes Park and Laramore County. And Windsor is currently in the process as well of developing short-term rental regulations. So in January twenty twenty-four, staff kicked off the short-term rental rate. So in January twenty twenty four, staff kicked off the short-term rental regulations project with an introduction to the short-term rental regulations project webpage and the launch of a community questionnaire to collect feedback on short-term rentals. The purpose of the short-term rental regulations community questionnaire was to gather general feedback and ideas from the community early in the short-term rental regulations project process. Members of the community were able to self-select to participate in the questionnaire and could participate multiple times. Generally, the questionnaire was intended for those community members who reside within town limits. However, individuals living in unincorporated Lemer County and Weld County outside of town limits could also participate. A link to the questionnaire was available to the community on the project webpage, which there is a link here provided on the screen for your reference, as well as anybody joining us. From January, or February first to February sixteenth. In addition, the town created a media release about the project, which was spotlighted on the town website and on the town's social media accounts. And a link to the questionnaire was provided to the town board, as well as the planning commission. In the two weeks that the questionnaire was active, four hundred and thirty-seven community members completed the questionnaire. The feedback received through the community questionnaire was valuable and helped staff in refining the first draft of short-term rental regulations and thereby creating the public draft of regulations. So essentially the public draft of regulations built upon that first draft. So a summary of the questionnaire is contained in your packets. And the summary can also be found on the project webpage, along with other documents, as well as an up-to-date timeline. So in addition to the community questionnaire, over the course of the last few months, staff has completed extensive research into other jurisdictions, short-term rental regulations from across Colorado and beyond to better understand the common issues related to short-term rentals and the common practices amongst those communities to address common issues. Those communities are listed on your screen. Many of the proposed regulations reflected in the public hearing draft are consistently seen in other communities' short-term rental regulations. Many of these standards are recognized as being reasonable and fair and are considered either industry standard or are recognized as best management practices. Staff also met with special interest groups, including town staff, Bertha Fire District and Safe Built, and Safe Built is the organization that administers our building code. And we collaborated on best practices and approaches to the application process and life safety inspections. So based upon the research completed, written email comments received from the public, special interest groups discussions and discussions with the town board of trustees during work sessions in November twenty twenty-three and January twenty twenty-four, staff developed a first draft of regulations. So the first draft of regulations was presented and discussed with the town board of trustees at a work session in March of this year. So the town board provided valuable input on the number, on a number of items and requested revisions of others. Those revisions and points of clarification, excuse me. Uh oh. Sorry, I lost my screen for a minute, guys. So the, the revisions and points of clarification are reflected in the public hearing draft. So focusing now on the public hearing draft of short-term rental regulations. The public hearing draft of short-term rental regulations amending the development code are organized based on sections of the current development code. So first presenting definitions. The public hearing draft proposes a definition for short-term rentals, which is currently not defined in the development code. And this includes total maximum occupancy for the short-term rentals. And this also includes clarifying the total maximum occupancy for a bed and breakfast use as currently defined by code. And then defining where short-term rentals are allowed based on zoning district. So the public hearing draft proposes adding short-term rentals to the table of principal and conditional uses, conservation subdivision uses, suburban uses and urban uses as a principal use by right following licensing requirements in those specific zone districts. And then addressing the use specific standards for short-term rentals, the use specific standards are then organized by subsections. So the first subsection proposes short-term rental business licensing requirements, including annual renewal, license transferability standards, limit to number of license per owner and posting of business license information. The second subsection proposes general standards for short-term rentals. So the general standards cover the majority of the regulations and address many of the best management practices and industry's standard requirements seen in other jurisdictions throughout Colorado. This includes such requirements as establishing a cap on the number of approved short-term rentals, limiting short-term rentals to one per property, legal dwelling unit standards, total occupancy limit, minimum off-street parking requirements and restricting use of the short-term rental as an event space. The third subsection proposes safety standards, including my safety inspection requirements, fire extinguisher, safety signage, operations manual and property manager requirements, as well as neighbor notification requirements and proof of liability insurance requirement. The fourth and final subsection proposes violations and penalties, as well as taxes and record-keeping requirements. And following my presentation, of course, I can address any questions you have on any of those regulations. So now for next steps. So following the planning commission's recommendation on the proposed public hearing draft of short-term rental regulations, amending the development code, your recommendation will be provided to the town board of trustees at their introduction hearing on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. So and at the public hearing on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. So code amendments require two hearings before the town board of trustees. If approved by the board on August thirteenth, the regulations will go into effect thirty days later. So there is a bit of a grace period there. Staff will continue to develop and refine the internal procedures and policies necessary to implement the short-term rental business license review process. So this includes structuring the application packet, seminal requirements, creating document templates and creating the life safety inspection checklist amongst other things. And then following the approval of the final town board of trustees' public hearing on August thirteenth, assuming they are approved, staff will host two public webinars to go over the short-term rental business license approval process for those property owners who are interested in applying. So those webinars will provide valuable information about the application process, including timelines, fees, middle requirements and expectations for the life safety inspection. Attendance to these webinars will not be required as part of the application process. However, staff would highly recommend that anybody who is interested in applying for a license do attend. And we will provide more information on the proposed webinars as the town board of trustees' hearings get a bit closer and we have a bit better of an idea. And, and staff will post information on the project webpage, which the link is again shown on the screen as information becomes available. In addition, we will likely send an email containing information on those webinars to the individuals who are on our short-term rental contact list. So if anyone joining us today that hasn't already been added to that list and would like to be added, they can just go ahead and email a request to str@bertha.org and they can be added to that contact. Again, the information is here on the screen. And then my very last slide, I will present that again for everyone to see. So in conclusion, staff recommends the planning commission approve the recommended amendments contained in the attached ordinance with all attached ordinance appendices and forward the recommendation of approval to the town board of trustees. And so with that, here's that information, which it looks like we're on pause. You guys don't see my screen. Try this again to apologize. There we go. It seems to now be stuck on that screen. I'll just leave it. So I'm available for any questions and what discussion you'd like to have.
Commissioners, questions? I have several, but I will, I will yield to you. Do you have questions?
Oh, yeah. Sure. You know, as I read through some of these new requirements, there was a requirement that anyway, that, that the management company or person will be documented within the rental, short-term rental space. Some were easily accessible by the occupants. But as it relates to issues for, let's just say loud noises or, you know, garbage or whatever, how do the neighbors of those residents, short-term residents, contact the management company? How do they know where to go?
Yeah. Great question. So the intent of our regulations, one of the other requirements within the general standards is that upon approval, the property owner of the short-term rental, that is, will be required to send out neighbor notification to adjacent properties within five hundred feet of the short-term rental. Five hundred feet is pretty standard throughout our development code for all of our neighbor, our notification. It's pretty consistent regardless of the application process. So they will be provided, we will have, that's one of the many documents that we are producing on, on our internal end is a template as to which we'll have them complete, and that will be a standard for all short-term rental owners. And they will be required to send that then to those adjacent property owners, send it to the town of Bertha as well. And then they will also be required to give planning a copy of that letter and then the mailing list and to whom they've contacted. In addition to that, we also are working on our backend with our GIS department to create an interactive map. So the map will be, once we, assuming we adopt and we get some approved, we will then have this map that will show the location of existing short-term rentals. Not only will this help internally for staff to, of course, if the cap is approved, to maintain and manage that cap, but also so that interested community members, whether they're neighbors or somebody just in Bertha is interested in knowing where short-term rentals are located, they can go to that map, they'll see the information, they can click on it. And one of the data layers will be property management contact information. So we want to make sure that there's full disclosure and that nobody feels like they don't, they don't know who to contact or who, where to go. In addition to that, of course, if there are concerns, we would ideally, if there's a noise complaint or what have you, the ideal situation is that yes, you would reach out to the property manager first. And then if you don't get a response, then you can certainly then reach out to our neighborhood services or code compliance. And there's, we'll have a short-term rental project or short-term rental page through the planning department that will provide a slew of information on short-term rentals, but one of which also how to report a violation. And that's, and again, that document, that, that mechanism to report a violation already exists through our neighborhood services, but we'll have a link also through planning. So we're hoping that that will help individuals get to where they need to go.
Commissioner, somebody else, can I ask a follow-up question to that? So you mentioned violations. Are those only going to be identified through people submitting complaints? Or how does neighborhood services manage that typically?
So my understanding, of course, I can't speak deeply into their process. But any, any complaint or violation that they receive, then they will investigate. And of course, a substantiated complaint. Some, when we recognize, and I think every, every jurisdiction municipality that has short-term rentals, that's one of the challenges is that substantiating certain complaints or something that's of a noise and say it is on the weekends. And of course, our code compliance doesn't operate on the weekends. They're going to be in those circumstances. We understand that is difficult and I think every jurisdiction would agree with that. Of course, if it's a noise complaint, noise regulations are disturbing the peace are actually part of municipal code and aren't actually part of the development code. So when it comes to noise, there is also, I believe you could call the sheriff's department. We certainly don't want to overload the sheriff's department with, you know, short-term rental concerns. But we recognize, and then other complaints or say it's going, there's a property that is continuously appears to be running events like weddings or receptions or what have you. Again, that is a complaint that would go to our neighborly services or neighborhood services. They would investigate and then if it appears to be a valid issue, they then have their process of sending out notification. And so they would first begin with, I, I believe it's a letter notifying the property owner or the property management company that there wasn't, appears to be a violation, what that violation is, and then they would be given ten days to remedy that violation. And again, if the violation is not remedied or it continues and, you know, code compliance continues to hear about it, then they would receive a second letter and an additional ten days. And then if again, it goes un, unaddressed, they would receive then a third letter with an additional ten days. And at that point in time, if they do not respond, don't remedy the situation, then they would essentially receive a summons. And once the summons, then, and that's how our code compliance is structured. The summons would then be to appear in court and it is the judge that determines the fine and then the timeframe in which it needs to be remedied.
So just to follow up on that, so that you wouldn't be able to, in code compliance, like revoke a license unless it was a serious enough violation or something?
We certainly could. And so that's how the regulations are addressed is that if you are within, if you are in continuous violation of any of the regulations, and this goes with for any violation of the development code. And we do have within the licensing, we do have the right then to not renew your license. And if there are severe enough violations, we can revoke the license. So there would be that ability.
And you said there's a ten-day remediation period. So what if you're renting the residents out for a weekend? And the people are gone in three days. How, I mean, how is that addressed?
And that's one of the ongoing honest challenges with short-term rentals is that from, because they are short-term rentals, that's one of the potential downsides is that it, people don't, are only there for a short time, they may not care. And yes, by the time that code compliance is made aware or is investigating, that particular issue may no longer exist. But again, if the, if it comes down to the fact that those particular issues continue to exist at that property, then it may be a management problem or a property owner problem and that they're not upholding. So for instance, we have a requirement that there has, there are good neighbor guidelines that will be contained within their operations manual. So if they're not abiding by those good neighbor guidelines, which the town will produce and we will have a template for that, that if they're in violation of that, again, that's a direct violation of the development code and the property owner, we would see a pattern of behavior essentially. But admittedly, that is one of the challenges with short-term rentals.
Yeah. So what would be the process? Imagine, you know, they come for three days, it's a long weekend and it's too noisy or whatever, kids are throwing stuff everywhere. What is the common, I mean, the current process? Because most of the time, even the owner of the STR will not be aware of that. So you need first to contact that person during a weekend, that person may be away. And then to hope that that person will interact with the renters. And if not, you know, so that's, that's, that's a little bit the weakness of the system here.
So the one thing with the property management is you'll see in the code is that they are required to be within a certain distance of the property, but they also have to be available twenty-four hours a day. So if say it's a property management company and the primary manager is out of town on vacation, they need to have somebody else who will step in on a twenty-four hour basis, should those situations arise. So ideally, the property management with a, that's the intent of requiring a property manager is that you won't have these weird gaps simply because the property owner goes on vacation, there's nobody to address it. We're hoping that again, this may be a solution, maybe it's not a complete solution, but the hope is, is that would hopefully cut down on that particular issue and that there will be somebody there to respond and to address the issue.
And would a property typically have more than one property managers? I'm trying to imagine like how someone could be available twenty-four, seven all the time.
My understanding is there are property management companies out there or there are companies that do manage short-term rentals or any rental property and that they do have their, their staff and they have that structured some way. But again, that would be the responsibility of the property owner and the property management company is to ensure they're meeting that regulation.
And, and how can we wait on that people? Because if they do something that is wrong, what, what are the actions that we can take? Because can we say, okay, you, you may not rent the property anymore and in which delays? Because of course, we know that if something happens, it's not on a one-month rental, because people will be cautious not to create any, any problems. because people will be cautious not to create any problems. But if it's a weekend, I mean, people come, there's some pot, there's some alcohol, and then we go. So, yeah, so we need to make sure that, yeah. Thank you.
Challenges of short-term rentals.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, it extends just beyond parks, parking, litter, whatever, the whole gamut. How we, how we manage that, and, you know, you don't want to take someone's right of way to do this kind of stuff, but there's also neighbors, and, you know, you're not living in a commercial zone, so. Yeah, I mean, I think the enforcement piece is the biggest piece I'm concerned about with respect to how things are mitigated, how they're resolved, who's responsible. Because I know there's property managers, you're saying that are responsible for one end, but as far as the town is concerned, having someone dedicated is a tough thing, number one. But who, who manages that, that whole process?
Yeah, and also, how about a fine system? If there's something that goes wrong, there's a fine, and probably the owner can say, okay, you have a deposit to give, and if something goes wrong, you don't get the deposit back. Some way to anticipate that condition, you know? And I guess that's been a concern for other cities as well, so what has been, you know?
And that's the hard part, is that with short-term rental regulations, there's truly not a one-size-fits-all. I think that even communities that have short-term rentals still have some struggle with certain components of it. I think the idea is that by establishing at least a set of regulations, as with anything, is that we hope generally that most participants in a short-term rental will be respectful and will be, you know, will acknowledge that this does impact the people around them, and that the, and certainly, and as good as the property owner and the property manager may be, it's also recognizing that they only have, they can't control, or they only have so much control of the people in which they rent to. So I think that is something that, yes, as you as a planning commission and the town board of trustees, really do have to consider moving forward, and that enforcement truly is, I think, a challenging, I think we're all still working on, in a lot of jurisdictions, is like, how can we do this better? But at the same time, from my experience, so previously, I worked for Limerick County, and I went through the short-term rental regulations update, and that was the project that I headed. And so certainly is very familiar to me, and that was an ongoing, ongoing was, a huge component, was the enforcement. Because you know, yes, these regulations will hopefully be abided by, and I think in the most part, and the experience that I had with Limerick County, is that they were, but those oftentimes, the things that you can't foresee, or those unique situations where they're only there for two days, and it happens to be the days that town isn't available, it does create a challenge, most definitely.
Did you have more questions?
Yeah, I did.
Go ahead.
Okay, so as it relates to, you know, I was reading this proposal, that the maximum number of STRs in the town shall not exceed 50, and it's based on a first-come-first-serve type basis. Do we know how many are out there today approximately?
So, as since they are not currently allowed, we, we do know through some efforts that code compliance has made to seek them out, and that is through efforts, you know, looking at your advertising platforms such as Airbnb, VRBO. We suspect the ones that we are aware of, there are roughly, I believe, 35 or somewhere in that range, 30, 35.
And that was going to be one of my questions too, was why did you, why did you choose 50?
Yes, so there was, we had a, three options that we presented to the town board of trustees. 50 is roughly what we're seeing in my research and looking at other jurisdictions, is that anywhere between 1 and 3% was what of the population or the residential population. And so we were more often than not looking at, I think 1% was pretty common. And so looking at 1% of what we currently have as residential numbers would be 50 roughly. We don't have a definitive number, exactly what our residential count is, but we know it's somewhere, the 1% would be 50. We looked also at options of doing other, you know, municipalities look at, Grand Junction, for instance, has a set cap for their downtown core, and then it's like it broadens out. So it's downtown core has a certain cap, and then beyond that is another cap. Unfortunately, when doing it in that manner, there's, it's real, it's hard to decide, well, what's the appropriate number for each of those districts? And then on top of that, where do we define those districts? And so that's a bit challenging. And then the other option we presented is that we start at 1%, at 50, and then with the potential of an annual basis, recounting our numbers as we get more and more residential numbers on hand, and then raise it by whatever that changes, which would be pretty small. But the town board of trustees was comfortable with, at this time, setting it at roughly 1% and going with a 50 cap. Knowing that, and it's, it's good to understand, is that it's important to, if we're going to allow short-term rentals, to have a decent base of regulations to ensure the health and safety of the community, as well as the fabric of our neighborhoods. But we can always use this as a base, reevaluate in a year to two years, and then adjust accordingly. So that cap, if we fill it warranted, could always be raised, if, if we find that it's necessary.
That brings a question, I'm sorry.
No, well, never mind, I have no one to call.
So that brings up with me another question, and that's, do we need to be worried at all about where, about the distribution of where these are? Instead of having 40 of them within two blocks of each other, or whatever, you know? Is there a way to build some type of safeguard to prevent that?
So one of the options that communities do, Limerick County, is one of them is that they implemented a separation requirement. So that is something I did present at work sessions to the town board of trustees. A separation that, so some communities have anything from 300 feet to 500 feet. I've also seen up to 1,000, I think 1,000 feet. So you would have an approved short-term rental, and from that approved short-term rental, you couldn't have another one within 500 feet. The challenges with a separation, the town board trustees, I don't think believed it was appropriate to move forward with it with a cap for the time being. There are some challenges in managing separation, because then you have to determine where is that separation taken from? Is it from the property line? Is it from the, the building itself? Where is that buffer, and how do, how do we manage that buffer? Limerick County did it through the building itself, because GIS data and our mapping, and what we do for addressing, is that they are taken usually, in most instances, from the center of the structure. And so that's how they determined, it would just seem the easiest, the most logical, there was reason justification behind it. So something with a separation, certainly other communities have implemented. I, and I've seen both the cap, Limerick County has a cap as well as the separation in certain areas, not all. Manitou Springs is one that has a cap, and they also have a separation requirement, I believe theirs is 500 feet. There are other communities that have vastly, like I said, the 1,000, and I can't remember who those were, but aside the point. But that is an option, that is something that if you feel would be beneficial and would like to propose that, we can, I can present that again, and your recommendation to the town board of trustees.
So, on this 50-cap limit, I don't know how many are out there, that's why I asked the question. But if there's more, you know, I, I think when you do like a first-come-first-serve type thing, I mean, maybe you could do it where you got people standing in line or whatever, I don't know how you're gonna hand these things out, or whatever. Should it be more on a lottery system, so then that way, you don't, I mean, whoever wants to do these things, if this is approved, you know, you put your name in a hat, and if there's only 35, you're in luck, if there's 55, five are gonna sit out, or whatever. I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to make the thing fair if, if it proceeds.
I'm also curious, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, Ton, but what the turnover on these kind of properties is like? I mean, are the 50 that get these permits in September, the 50 properties that are gonna be rentals for eternity? Or, I mean, you know, in theory, maybe short-term rentals get sold eventually or something, but is there, you know, any reference point we have from other towns about how that changes over time?
That's a good question. So also too, I guess I should clarify on the 50, we also felt that 1% out of 50 would likely be a safe number to start at, because we truly don't believe that there are likely many more beyond 35. We suspect that most individuals use the primary platforms. Granted, there may be some that, yeah, aren't using platforms, and they do just use a property management, but we believe that that 50 would allow for those individuals to also come in and submit an application. The lottery versus first-come-first-serve, our intent is, again, that's one of the many things that we will, are addressing on our, the internal side, that is an internal policy. As of right now, all of our land use applications are submitted electronically. Short-term rental business license applications will be treated no differently. They will also be electronic, and so the idea is that, at that webinar, we will discuss that once these become active, yes, you can submit your application via electronic, which would be email, and then it would be timestamped, and so that we could keep track of, yes, who's coming in, and realizing that, yes, you, if you don't send it in as quickly as somebody else, you may not get first in line. I mean, however, that is, the lottery as well as if we were to get, I think it would be harder for us to actually manage if it was a lottery system and taking all those in, because we'd have to say, for one, we'd be assuming that all 50 are going to come in, and then we'd have to leave it open for a period of time, which also then eats into the review process, and we couldn't get starting, started on processing them. So I think, of course, we think that maybe time management-wise and getting these into the system and approved and reviewed and all that, that the timestamp, just as they come in, would be the best route and best consideration of time. But that is something that, of course, isn't written into the regulations, but that it will be an internal, internal policy. And we certainly, yes, if you have a recommendation or preference, but we certainly think that submitting, when they become active, is the most appropriate route.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and if you limit to 50, you understand that this becomes a value, because people would want to have, to be in the park, I mean, in the 50 first. How can you make sure that people are not catching it on time without having a real property to rent and take it as something that they can negotiate with someone else? How can you make sure? Just, just wondering.
I would just, in all honesty, I hope that people are honest, and that I, I don't, I, I don't know that I would expect individuals to do that, I certainly, that is a risk we could take, or would be taking if they were to submit and submitted, and, but the thing is, is that once we review that application and for completeness and bring it in,
Yeah, it has to be.
We're checking, we're making sure that all the documents are signed, that the title commitment is reflected of the same information that's on the application form. Like, we're reviewing this to ensure that the applications are complete, and of course, that includes a property.
What if they're not? Do you, would they fall out of line?
They, yes, if they are not complete, they will not be accepted.
So they fall out of line, they go to the back of the pack?
And again, that is just to be equitable and fair to the individuals who have applied and who have, and again, that is why we're stressing, the webinar is very important, to get all of the information about how to submit and to submit a complete application. Because I think out of all fairness, especially if we do have a cap, that your application needs to be complete.
Follow up on something really quick that Abigail mentioned, and that, do other jurisdictions have time limits on, like, the successive licenses that one property can have? 10 years or 10 licenses or?
We, I have not seen that, once you get, so when it comes to land use approval, and then, so what's unique in how we're approaching this with the business license, not all jurisdictions do it. So it's different in different jurisdictions, so some do business license, some do a land use approval. Land use approval processes run with the land. Once you get an approval, it is forevermore, unless, again, you are in violation of the land use regulations and what have you, but generally, truly, a land use approval runs with the land. Whereas a business license, you're applying for a license, and if you, like a liquor license or what have you, if there is a violation, or it gives us the ability then to revoke your license if you are not abiding by the regulations. So generally speaking though, so if it's most jurisdictions, if it's a land use approval process, there's been no legal ability to say, your land use approval is only good for 10 years, and that's, yeah.
But we're doing a license, so would there be the possibility then, from what you're saying, of putting a limit and saying, if they've gotten successively each year a license, at one point saying, after 10 years, we gotta take a break, or?
That is not something we have considered, I don't know that that would necessarily, I, I,
I think the idea, the reason I was thinking of that is if, let's say you had 60, you know, people that are 60, folks that wanted to do a short-term, do short-term rentals, 10 years the same, 50 people, you know, have their, people can't ever get in to the, in line. Would that just be raising the cap, would that be limiting your business licenses for that year?
I believe in that case, it would be, yes, raising, raising the cap. And I think too, this question is that, I don't know, you were asking about how, how often they come up. In my experience, I don't believe they come up often unless a property sells, changes hands, or there are, I think, rare instances where a property owner just simply doesn't want them any longer. The license doesn't transfer, right? So the license would not transfer unless you got written approval or consent from the town. So in instances, say, you are selling your property, and the new property owner would like to come in and also have a short-term rental. The idea is that you could potentially transfer that license to the new purchaser, but you would have to get approval from the town. So essentially, that new owner would be coming and submitting all the documents, and it would give them that ability. But if they're not abiding by the regulations, or they're not submitting the correct materials, they can certainly lose the license once it sells. We could make it a hard pass that there's no transferability at all, even upon sale. And that is something that we've gone back and forth on, so the first draft of regulations did say non-transferable, when the property sells or changes hands or whatever it may be, hands down, the license is up, and somebody else could potentially come in and grab it. And then further discussions with staff, what, and what have you. We decided then to put that provision that you potentially could transfer the license upon sale or transfer of ownership with the town's written approval. And that, again, is so that we could manage it, and if, say, for instance, it's a property that was maybe problematic, we could really address or assess the situation.
I have another scenario. Question, does the property need to be available right away to be able to apply for short-term rental? Or imagine I'm a landlord and I have a property, I have renters and they're gonna leave in six months, and I try to register my house for the, when they leave, to become a short-term rental. Is it possible, or what are the?
Yeah, we will, we will be looking at who's occupying your, your building currently, or, you know, if you have tenants, or who's living there. We won't be looking at that, so you could, if you rightfully, if you had, say, a tenant for six months, and you did want to come in and go ahead and submit your application, knowing that it's going to take some time to review, and hopefully not a lot of time, but that there will be a review process, and you really can't have a short-term rental until we give you approval, then, yes, you could certainly, to prepare, if you wanted to get your application in, you certainly could. Then, yes, you could certainly, if, to prepare, if you wanted to get your application in, you certainly could.
Thank you.
What happens if, in that scenario, Mark gets that license and then never uses it, decides to re-rent to people?
Yeah.
And that is an ongoing, I think, concern of some communities. And I, I, I believe there, I have heard in instances where there are those individuals who just simply hold it and don't ever use the property. Unfortunately, I mean, they have every right to apply and we, we can't govern how they use their property if they apply meet the regulations. I mean, that's. Yeah, how they choose to use it and how often is really their decision.
So, Ton, something interesting about all the information you've given us is that you, so there's been an effort to identify short-term rentals that are operating in the town currently and that possibly that's around thirty-five. So in hope, if this was approved, all of those would apply for licenses and be approved. And so really, there would maybe be only fifteen additional short-term rentals if the cap is also approved from what is currently operating in the town. But if they don't apply for those licenses, is there a pathway for making sure those people stop operating their short-term rental? What does that look like as these regulations change?
That would be our co-compliance, that would be neighborhood services. And they would continue to pursue those who are continuing to operate without approval. Yes.
So as it relates to, to licenses, in the draft that I've read, an owner can obtain up to two licenses, correct?
Correct.
How is that review managed on the ownership side?
So that was a regulation that was requested by the Town Board of Trustees at our last work session. It is limiting the number of license that a property owner could have in hand. There are, yes, challenges with managing. As you can have, of course, a property owner that maybe one property is in a husband's name or a spouse's name, what have you.
Trust, whatever.
And that certainly is the challenge of that requested regulation. And that there would be some difficulty. And of course, with every application, we will require a title commitment. Uh, and that is just so we can confirm that we are, we can process the application as it's signed and documented by that, the actual property owner to do so. Um, and we would check that. And of course, if the application and the title commitment match, uh, there, that would be a limit, that would be something we would move forward with and assume that then rightfully those two individuals could, I guess, in total have four properties and have four short-term rentals.
And so say if a, a couple owns a home and they use a property management service to manage their short-term rental, could that property management service be managing like seven different short-term rentals in Berthoud? Because they like are going through different owners?
So, so the actual property owner can only own the two licenses? So again, we're checking the property owner, property management company. Yes, absolutely, they can manage multiple short-term rentals within the town of Berthoud and, and other communities. Because if that's the services they provide, then that's what they're providing. So certainly, they could on numbering neighbors or neighbors could have the same property management, absolutely.
I was gonna say, how may I understand something here? I was trying to understand the difference between a B and B and an S T R, really, in these rigs. What's that difference and how would they, from the, from a regulatory standpoint, how would they be treated any differently?
Good question. So a short-term rental is the, the quickest, briefest way to say it is that a short-term rental does not have a property owner onsite when the guests are present.
So the owner, the property manager, is not there. A bed and breakfast, the owner or operator is onsite with the guests. So if the owner or operator of a bed and breakfast use leaves on vacation, they cannot rent their property out on a short-term basis while they are away. So the, the difference essentially is that, yes, you have your, no property owner, property owner. So that's the difference, yes.
As it relates to fees, so obviously there's a license fee. But are there any other fees that would impact those properties? So as an example, will property taxes go up because it's a revenue generator? Are there sales tax collections? What, what other fees are, inspection fees, I don't know, I'm just asking.
Yeah, so we will have an initial application fee. Um, and then we will have, so the way all of our land use or our applications are structured, our fee schedules are structured, which can be found out online through our finance department, is that you have an application fee. So it's initial, right now, we are considering a three hundred and fifty dollar application fee. And then you also have, are required to submit a deposit. The deposit, the way that our regulations are stated is that you have your application fee and a deposit. The deposit then covers on staff time. So we do charge staff time, you are billed for staff time. So that the deposit we are currently considering is a thousand dollar deposit. Then that is for the initial approval. And because the, the application fee and that deposit not only covers staff time internally, but we also then have our life safety inspection. Our life safety inspection will be performed by the town's building official. So that's through Safe Built. So that deposit will pay for their time. And assuming that your home is equipped with the requirements for the life safety inspection, which would be carbon monoxide detectors, fire alarms, fire extinguishers, proper egress from each of your sleeping rooms, amongst other things, handrails, what have you, when they go to do their inspection. If you pass that, and certainly in newer homes, you likely will, there won't be any, hopefully, any modifications that will need to be made. His, that time will be used out of the deposit. What is remaining of that deposit would then essentially be returned to you in time. So the idea is that that deposit would be, remain with the town for the first year of operation. So that if there are any warranted additional inspections, or say you do, you start getting violations, our co-compliance could then, if you are, you know, a violation after violation via, you're paying for staff time. And our management, so after that first initial year, we then will have an annual renewal. The annual renewal will occur at the same time every year for everyone who has a short-term rental business license. Your, that first year, your renewal, which will be a hundred and fifty dollars, will come out of that deposit and then we will return what remains of the deposit. That, that hundred and fifty dollars, hopefully, or that hundred and fifty, and then whatever is left in your deposit, is we do require per the regulation, would be an annual re-inspection, life safety inspection. Because we want to ensure that you are still having your operable safety mechanisms in place. So that would be from the, the land use planning component and the fees associated with that. Yes, as a short-term rental, you are required to pay lodging taxes because you are a lodging facility. And so part of the application process is that you will have to establish an account with our finance department to remit lodging taxes. So that is a requirement. I believe there are also sales tax, trying to think, part of the business license. And then when it comes to taxing of the property itself based upon the use, that is through Laramore County Assessor or Weld County Assessor, depending on where your property resides. I, following, and this goes back to the email that you, you received earlier today. We had, since the last Town Board of Trustees work session, we, I did have a very helpful, wonderful conversation with the chief appraiser at Laramore County to confirm how it is exactly that they, they tax properties or appraise properties that are either defined as short-term rental or a bed and breakfast. Short-term rentals are currently, as much as we, as the land or community development, um, planning departments, and most consistently throughout most jurisdictions, define them as a commercial use within the, the development code or land use regulation. However, currently, right now, at the state, they are not, by, I believe, defined as a commercial, they're a residential use. So it's a residential property, taxed as a residential property. And that is state designation, state, that's how. And so recently, they had state legislature being considered. And unfortunate, well, unfortunately, fortunately, however you look at it, they, they never moved forward. And they were Senate bills that would change that from residential to commercial for all short-term rentals, but those died. So that did not move forward. So they are taxed just as a residential property. Bed and breakfast use, and this is to provide clarification to the email. My understanding, what I was told by the assessor, is that how the planning department, whether it is our planning department, it is Laramore County's planning department, Wellington, Fort Collins, whomever it may be, does not determine how the property is taxed. So how we define bed and breakfast within our development code has no bearing, no value to how the, the county assessor assesses and taxes the property. The, the assessor confirmed that they have a state statute definitions that they, they use when assessing and taxing properties. So for a bed and breakfast, they have a state statute definition. And if by definition, your property falls under that, which is a lodging facility, that then determines how they assess and tax your property. And it is my understanding that it is the portion of the, the portion that is occupied by the resident is taxed as residential. The portion of the bed and breakfast that is, is used as, by the guests for lodging, whichever rooms or portions of the home are used for lodging, is taxed as commercial. And so you may find that you actually get a combined or split tax. And yes, it, commercial is taxed significantly more than residential. But in no way, I want to reiterate, is that in no way in which we define a bed and breakfast determines how they tax or assess a property. It's on the use and how the county views it.
Yeah, that's interesting.
Any other questions for Ms. Hillbrun? Nick asked a lot of my questions.
So I was looking at table three point three. It talked about the difference of zonings. And there's a zone in there called T N. What is that? Cause I don't see that anywhere else exist.
Yeah, so T N is traditional zoning. And we are actually currently in the process of updating our zoning tables. We, I don't believe have any property within the, the town that is actually currently zoned, T, or T N, traditional. So I think it's something that, it was residual. And of recent, we've acknowledged that it needs to be cleaned up and we will be.
That's because you're paying attention to it when it's sent to us.
One, one last question for me, anyway. I noticed that we did receive some comments that, about incorporating Laramore County language, other Laramore County language for several different things. And I'm guessing that was obviously something that you looked at, something you've already worked with when you, when you devised these, the regulations that we're looking at tonight.
Yeah, so just to provide some clarification on public comment. So anytime we receive for any application, including code amendments, anytime we receive any public comment, we do review them all. And we do, in this particular case, he, the individual made some suggestions to potential modifications to the, the code. And, and certainly we read through it. Some of the comments or the suggestions had already been incorporated by staff, minor changes, what have you. Some of the others are suggestions, requests, we didn't feel were, are, aren't appropriate, didn't feel or aren't appropriate for code. So for instance, we typically, you avoid putting fees within code, land use code, because then you have to go through a code amendment in order to modify those. So there are certain things that just don't find themselves within land use regulation. Um, and then other components, uh, so the portion that is highlighted in those comments, if I am not mistaken, uh, and based upon the language, and it was taken from Laramore County's Code Enforcement Ordinance for short-term rental regulations. So the difference with Laramore County and the town of Berthoud is that Laramore County's Code Compliance Division, they have the ability to regulate as well as ticket and administer fines. So unlike the town of Berthoud, uh, our neighborhood services, they, they, in most instances, not all, but in land use regulation, they do not have the ability to administer fines. So in order to administer those fines, and I, I don't know the complete ins and outs, as, like I said, the co-compliance is a different division. But in order to then enforce the short-term rental regulations at Laramore County, there was a subsequent adoption of the Code Enforcement Ordinance. And so the language that is highlighted, I believe, came from that ordinance and isn't necessarily appropriate for our land use regulations.
So in other words, if we wanted to do something, so we'd have to put that in a totally different place.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know that we would, since that's not how we're structured.
Yeah.
That's not our, the town's practice.
Just a follow-up about referencing other towns' regulations. The parking regulations, are those lifted from somewhere? How were those developed?
So you do see some of those regu, the tables. You also, there are a lot of jurisdictions that are hard and fast, that it simply is no on-street and it all has to be off-street. Through discussions with the Town Board of Trustees, we certainly threw, of course, comments from the general public, hearing a lot of feedback on that is a huge concern, is that community is being overtaken by parked cars on the street. We wanted a, a, I think, a nice way to follow the regulations, requiring that everything had to be onsite. So on, on streets or off-street parking, on-street parking cannot be counted towards their requirement because we want to ensure that they aren't taking over neighborhoods with parked cars. But you do see just hard and fast numbers, but you also do see some tables out there that it's based on the quantity of bedrooms. And so feeling that that provided some, we didn't wanna be hard and fast, but that created, you know, that, because you have four bedrooms and two guests per bedroom, we didn't wanna do a hard eight, knowing that you do see people go to rentals in one vehicle or shared vehicles. So we felt that that was a nice, in-between.
Okay, but you, I mean, so imagine you have four bedrooms, you need to have four, sorry, five bedrooms, you need to have four onsite, uh, off-street parking. What if these parking spots are occupied by the owner or by, you know?
So, so the, um, I believe we now have language and letter that clarifies that. That if you, essentially, if you cannot provide the required minimum number of onsite parking spaces and you can, you can provide a portion, that will be the ultimate deciding factor in how many guests that you can have. So although the regulations, we do say that standard count is two per bedroom plus an additional. If you then can't provide, so say, yes, you have a, a two-bedroom, or, yeah, say you have a four-bedroom, like you said, but you can only provide the two parking spaces. That will then dictate how, what your maximum occupancy can be.
Just gonna check that, control that.
Any other questions? Planner Hillbrun?
Not for me.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ton.
Looks like a lot of time already spent developing the development.
My pleasure, indeed. I'm glad we are here. I'm, I'm glad we've gotten to this point. So I know everybody is eager to get, get some answers.
Anyone who has not signed the sheet up front here on the little black table that wants to speak tonight, please do that now if you haven't already. If you're in late, you need to do that. Good, all right, so with that, I think we, thank you, Terry. Oh, would you mind? With that, let's open the, the public hearing. Terry, who is the first person on our list? Terry, who is the first person on our list?
John Evans.
Good evening. My name is John Evans. I live at 3252 Donzante Bay Court in Heron Lakes. And appreciate the time and opportunity to speak and listen to what the staff has put together as a second version of the short-term rental policy. By way of background.
Could you tell us your address?
3252 Donzante Bay.
Thank you.
By way of background.
I'm sorry, Mr. Evans. Chair Anderson, would you like this to be timed? Is there a limit?
Yeah.
Sorry, we didn't hear that.
Let's give him another.
I am so sorry, Mr. Evans.
By way of background, I, along with a number of my neighbors, kind of initiated this whole conversation last summer because of what was transpiring in our neighborhood. So we had a plethora of short-term rentals and people violating the code. This conversation tonight tells me that we really need to be involved in the process to help craft the code. And why I say that is the comments from you as commissioners and from Ton are that there's a whole bunch of things that aren't addressed in the second version of this document. The red lines in the back of the commentary that was provided on the website, that came from myself and a number of neighbors who said, look, you need to make this tight. If you're going to put it in place, how many people, how many parking spaces, what kind of enforcement, et cetera, et cetera, that needs to be addressed. When we met at the town hall meeting on March 26th with the mayor and the trustees, we were told that we could have a workshop to work hand-in-hand with staff and administration to help put our comments in. And I appreciate Ton said, well, Laramo County code does not apply because of the way enforcement is done or what have you. We don't know that. But there's nothing, for example, that really ties to enforcement. The enforcement is going to come down to the neighbors. That's where it's going to go. I will tell you, in talking to our compliance officer in the town, she personally told me, I do not have time to manage this. So how is that going to change if you're going to allow 50 now? Where, and by the way, the land use code today, as was stated, does not allow short-term rentals. However, 35 are operating. So you're telling me that things are going to change now? How is that going to change? Because they're not allowed now, and you're letting them happen under the wire. Where's the tax coming into the town? They're operating under the radar. So now we're going to go put this in place? What are we going to do differently? And that's why we want to participate in helping develop what goes into this policy. And we're just asking for that opportunity. So I also want to let you know, and part of, there wasn't discussion here, but there was, it says that, you know, it's a responsibility of homeowner to make sure they're compliant with where they live. So if an HOA or Metro District doesn't allow it, then that would be a cutoff where you couldn't even apply for a license. Well, I live in Heron Lakes, and per the Metro District, you cannot have a short-term rental. Bottom line, it's in the covenant. So that needs to be dealt with. I want to say that, you know, we believe, like, owner-occupied short-term rentals?
Okay.
Owner-occupied short-term rentals, that's a different story. Because there's a different sort of management there. And I'll defer to other people and their comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Rick Stewart.
My name is Rick Stewart. I live at 3368 Donzante Bay Court, S-T-E-W-R-T, by the way. Not a difficult name, but the right way. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight. I think that what I heard tonight about all the questions you have, all the discussion that was presented, tells me exactly what I already knew. This is not ready for primetime. We need a lot of work on this. And as John said, we've been trying to be involved in this since it started. I'll give you a couple examples. It started off with five Airbnbs on our street of less than 20 houses. So when you're starting to talk about density of Airbnbs, we were the density. The second density is in the Heron Lakes townhomes. So very important to have those kinds of things written into the code so that you don't have 50 anywhere. You have 50 spread out all over the place if you want to have them. We're not against STRs. We live in a single-family home neighborhood. It's zoned, as the master plan says, for single-family homes. All of a sudden, we have commercial residential things going on in our single-family home neighborhood. So everybody's worried about, oh, gosh, we don't want the owner to be put out. Well, how about all the neighbors? One owner, 10 neighbors. And we suffered through multiple weddings, parties, you name it. And who was the enforcer? It was us. This document does not provide for enforcement. It's very important that we put that stuff in there because not only does it cost money, but Laramo County, you know, the sheriff's department is not going to come out when I call them up and say, hey, somebody's being noisy. They're going to go, yeah, okay, I'll take care of that after the 16 other important things I've got going on here. As you pointed out, Mr. Hopkins, the three days, they're gone. 10 days, they're gone, and they're back. So the problem can occur multiple times. And if I make a complaint, is it going to be documented as a complaint? There's a violation that will then be taken as, oh, three violations and you're out. I own property in Boulder, three violations by my tenants, long-term rentals, and we can never rent the place again. And I'm responsible for that, not the tenants. So there's a lot of things that need to be discussed in this. And we would love to be part of it, provide some of these on-the-ground information that, you know, somehow let's tie it up really tight so that we can make this policy work when it is in fact implemented. Thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Janine. Hello, I'm Janine Weinzierl, W-E-I-N-Z-I-E-R-L. And I live at 3333 Heron Lakes Parkway, which is part of Heron Lakes TPC. And I wanted to touch base and mention several of the things that both John and Rick had done on the density. That when, my understanding is that whatever code Laramo County has, we can not be less lenient than that. We can be stricter. And with their code of 500 feet, that our code can, should not, cannot be less than that. I would propose 1,000 feet minimum. Because again, you're relying on the neighbors to be the police, day in, day out. There are also, we have, in our conversations with the town board and within the Metro District, where there are no short-term rentals, there is the exception for the TPC golf tournament because of how important that is to this community. And in all of our discussions, that is the one exception that we have asked for, where there be leniency and we're able to really step outside and be able to accommodate what is needed for that tournament. And then the other thing is the enforcement, you know, where, as I said, you are relying on the neighbors. And to me, where one of your goals was to manage the impact of the surroundings, that does not do that. When you're relying on the neighbors to be the police, or whatever the issue is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Gowan.
Good evening, Commissioners, staff members. Thank you for your time. I'm Matthew Gavin. I live at 3270 Donzante Bay Court. My last name is spelled G-A-W-I-N. Bill Polish in us. I'd like to say a couple of things tonight. I have also been deeply impacted and traumatized by Airbnbs, beyond what I expected myself. I moved here to retire here. I've lived in four countries and in 20 different places in America. And I chose here to retire. It's the garden spot. It's built up of neighborhoods that are connected by walking paths. And what I moved into instead was a residential neighborhood that has commercial businesses every other building. And it's been really hard to square that with the town that I wanted to live in. I know we're looking at, I heard Ton say that we want to customize this to our circumstances. And then we keep talking about all the local communities and let's do what they do. That's a great place to start, but we need to focus on our experience here in the community. We also need to look at the experience of other communities, like, say, New York City, which has banned all of the Airbnbs unless the owner is occupied and there while the renters are there. That is a really big distinction, and I would really love us to talk about that more. Or the state of Hawaii, which has banned all Airbnbs throughout the entire state because they're tired of losing all their affordable housing for all their workers and making it affordable for people living in the communities. That is about to happen in Berthoud. We did not have a discussion that we wanted commercial businesses in our residential neighborhoods. Silicon Valley made that decision for us when they offered an app that you could rent out your house as a hotel. And now you don't need insurance, you don't need a liquor license, you don't need inspections. Need a light version. We're going to propose, well, if you want to do your house, you don't have to have all those commercial requirements. Here's an easier set. We didn't make that decision. Somebody made it for us. I can tell you, there's been a lot of discussion about buying licenses. So if you guys are having 50, I can guarantee you, I'll find 50 people to try and be in line that morning and buy them and sit on them. Because you're setting up a system that forces that to be the only way we can escape this nightmare. I would agree that we should focus and have the town work with the community that's been impacted to address our specific experiences here in the community. The density, five on our street, a house that had 30 people staying in it on multiple occasions, a cul-de-sac with a set of six-year-old twins trying to learn their bikes while dodging in and out of 30 cars parked at the Airbnb. I also know that complaint is going to come to the city. The homeowners, even if it's not allowed, have no enforcement capability. They're allowed to fine like $50 a day. The Airbnb operators don't care. Finally, I'd like to say, there is a compromise here. I am not against all Airbnbs. I've met wonderful, many wonderful people in this community and some of them are here tonight to talk in favor of it. And in their circumstances, downtown, mixtures, distances, we need to make that the focus. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie McConnell.
Hello, Charlie McConnell, 3333 Heron Lakes Parkway. Appreciate your time, taking the comments. I guess my biggest frustration at the moment with the whole process is, again, in the March 26th meeting, we had public comments. And the trustees and the mayor said, hey, we'll set up works, set up study sessions that you can work with Ton and do that. And that hasn't occurred. So, I mean, we're just begging to be involved in the process, try to make it better for everybody. Don't know if I'm allowed to ask a question and maybe Ton can answer somebody. I mean, is this supremacy essentially whatever the state has is the minimum? Whatever Laramo County has, they can be the same or stricter? And Berthoud is, then again, we can be stricter? Is that how that sets up as far as legal supremacy?
Please speak to us, and we can ask that question for you at the end of the public hearing. But thanks for asking. We won't, make sure we ask that question for you.
Okay. Because our understanding is it does, you know? So if that's the case, again, Laramo County's got very good regulations out there. You know, should we repeat them? You know, and if there's questions where Berthoud would then be less strict, I think you're setting up a legal challenge there, you know, that might be confusing or, you know, cost Berthoud money and whoever wants to do that money. Again, I'm listed as a con, but for short-term rentals, we just need to have the right regulations in place. And there's other people getting ready to speak. I know this young lady over here is now going to be shuffled under the bed and breakfast definition, whereas in Laramo County, she would be a short-term hostess. They actually have short-term rentals where there's occupant, where the owner can be there and then rent out just a room or something like that. Again, that seems very reasonable, but the definitions in the current regulations don't address that word, Laramo County does. So it seems like there's some room there. And then also, I'd like to say, the separate, maybe the separate areas. I know it causes more work, but, you know, having an area downtown where maybe you want more of the visitors and people coming in, shopping, doing things like that, compared to other areas, you know, some areas make more sense, some others don't. So again, maybe that should be addressed in it. And again, we're just asking, I mean, you got a lot of people in the community begging to be involved. And it just seems like we're getting shut out at the moment, which is concerning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Rochelle Schott. Gary Light. Hello, I'm Rochelle Schott, S-H-O-T-T. And my husband and I live at 3300 Donzante Bay Court. Like my neighbors have said, I appreciate, I appreciate what all you guys were, the questions you were asking, because it's, I think, the first time I actually heard questions that made sense to me. When we chose to move to Berthoud, we just became empty nesters. And we're so excited to move with this amazing, you know, my husband grew up in Kersey, this amazing small town with all these, you know, retirement amenities and with wonderful neighbors. Like you heard from the others, that 20 houses, five Airbnbs, no enforcement. And it's almost like, you know, we're the ones paying the taxes. We shop at Ace Hardware. We go to Hayes three times a week. We go to grandpa's for breakfast. We're, us here in the community, our vet is all here on Main Street, that we're actually penalized, being penalized for wanting to be a part of the community and that people running their businesses. And I do believe there's a place for these Airbnbs, but 500 feet, 1,000 feet, our lot lines are zero practically. So one after the other, after the other. I have MS. There's times I'm, I can't get out of the house or get out of bed. There's so many cars that were coming up and down. And this, again, five on one street. And that's where, you know, I just pray, you know, people bought, people who had enough money to buy a second home for over $1 million in Heron Lakes so they can make a profit of it, you know, when the rates were low. Well, if I want to move now to sell my house because of all this madness with these Airbnbs that I've already, the trauma's already been done, right? Like, I don't get those days back where I, we were up all night where the people next door, their dog tried, they're renting, tried to jump over and kill my dogs. There's, there's no one that has a voice for us. And everyone's so concerned about these other people who are the residents here. And you see that all of us that have spoke are on the same street. We love our neighbors. We love our neighborhood. I can't sell my house today if I'd been wanting to, if I wanted to get out because I'm so traumatized from these short-term rentals that we've dealt with. So I really appreciate, I just hope that you take us into consideration, the people who live here, day in, day out, that, you know, we're feeding our community. We love this community. And so anyways, I just hope that we're a priority.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Gary Light at 3344 Donzante Bay.
More popular. I'm just going to read a couple of things, because there's a lot of things that maybe you'll ask questions of Ton and different people. So please don't issue STR permission to residents within developments who show, like, our development has a 30-day requirement. So just know that. We'll submit the paperwork, and then you don't have to do that. And that's one less thing that you're going to have to manage. Because they won't have one because they're not allowed in Heron Lakes. So if we submit the information that shows that's what it is, then it should be easy for the city. That's one thought. Zoning requirements seem irrelevant in this town. I mean, if it's an R1 or an R2, well, that's not a commercial business. So I don't, I don't understand it. And in fact, we said there's 35 of these short-term rentals running right now. I can tell you there were a lot more because all the ones that were on our street are kind of in limbo right now, waiting for you to make. waiting for you to make this decision and jump back in. So there's going to be that. So we ought to really look at zoning and figure out what is zoning? Because when I bought my home, R2, I didn't expect to live next to a commercial kitchen, which is how that was being used one weekend. And there was a porn shoot and I can validate all these things, but they happened next to my house. Okay? So this is real. It's not pretend. I love your comment about a fine system. You know what? There's nothing like a slap on the hand, three letters. These people, they don't even live here. The people that bought next to us, they, I bet they bought it, I don't know for a fact, but they bought it as an owner-occupied property. They've never lived in that day one and they've been renting that as short-term rental and then as a rental. So somebody needs to enforce. And you know what? What came to the head tonight was enforcement is a big issue. And that's why John and Matt and all of our good neighbors here are saying, we need to be involved in this. You don't know what's happening to us, your residents, your neighbors in Loveland. I lived in Loveland for 34 years. I've lived in Berthoud for now too. And I'll tell you what, it's regrettable right now. I'd like to see that change. ADA requirements. I know they have them for hotels. So now you've got all these short-term rentals. And why are we cowering to all these people to run their separate business? I have a job. A lot of people have a job, but you know what? I don't impose that on other people. They need to think about why you're allowing this. Matt said it really well when he was talking about the app out of California. Well, we're here in Berthoud, Colorado. Let's make our own rules and let's live by them and do, do the right thing for our community.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chuck Angerbun. I live at 1600 Alpine Avenue. And so I'm a business owner here in town as well. I do one development. And so I think it really comes down to management of companies. So I plan on renting out my homes as a short-term rental. I've actually managed others in bed and breakfast in Estes Park. I don't think a lot of people know like Airbnb, VRBO, they actually have tools for the host to look at previous people that are like rented. So you can actually see if they've had complaints from other places they've stayed at, anywhere. And you can see how long they've been a member and those things. So as a business owner, it helps me to have data to really, you know, know as the person coming in, I review each person I was working up in Estes Park of who is going to be renting my home. And do I trust them? All those things. They, no parties, things like that. So it really comes down to the owner of this, you know, these type of complaints of really just, our business owners going to run their business like they do long-term. Because I look at it as, this is my home. I want to, I care about my home. I don't want people in there destroying it. Those are allowed. They're usually, you know, drinking, they're usually destroying, you know, things in the house as well. And that's not what I want. So I just want to make sure it's clear that there are tools for managers to actually make sure that this doesn't happen. Oh, it comes down to those, those personal things and management and those coming in. But I also agree with, you know, the 50 licenses. It's a concern of mine because if someone does, you know, hold that license and let's say they get some complaints, what if someone else comes in and what if there's, you know, diversification, Berthoud is growing. Let's make sure we have renters, you know, close to Carter Lake. Let's make sure we have some. And I'm not sure where the zoning ends, but I just kind of make sure, you know, we don't have everyone clustered in areas all by the golf course, things like that. Let's just have some diversification. There's a lot of pros to short-term rentals, but it comes down to management and making sure we get right people in there. There's a lot of tax revenue, there's sales tax. There's a lot of pros, but it really comes down to making sure there's a good system and regulations to make that happen. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Hi, it's Mindy. H-U-G-H-E-S. We're at 1520 Harar Bell. So when we, when we bought into the property at 1520 Harar Bell, it was actually the first STR in the whole neighborhood. We're part of the town homes. We're not part of the homes on the other side of the hill. When we bought into it, the developer, the salespeople with Landmark and the metro district all said that we could do the short-term rental. We did our research. We got our license. They gave us a license to do it from the metro district then. So we were operating as everything as we thought we needed to do. We didn't know at the time because we were given a license that the town of Berthoud did not allow it. So there's our underlying issue. We want to be, as a management, we are very hands-on. We are within 10 minutes. If we get a call, we're there to make sure everything. We watch parking, we watch parties, we do all of that. We want to be part of the good neighbor program and management should be part of that and want to be part of that. So things like this, DeSante Bay, regrettably, I feel bad for these people. But this has nothing to do with how we manage our properties under good faith and, and why we, why we bought into this. Because someday this will be our home. So we're very concerned that everybody manages a property correctly. We do have problem, a little issue with the wording with the separation because we're in quadplexes. So there's four townhomes in each one. So if you were to say you have to be within 500 feet or 1,000, well, who determines which one in that fourplex is going to be able to operate, you know, that, that, that's a problem there. On the other side of the hill, DeSante Bay, they were never able to get licensed. They were never good on license to do that. But in the townhomes, we were. So that's, that's the difference of that part of the short-term rental. My other problem is the electronic submission. As you guys had problems with your computers tonight, we know that there's problem with computers. So I would only ask if in this application system that we know that it's a good system that will allow us, and will we get something back that says your application is complete and has been submitted? Because it's only a program that if you try to submit an application, it comes back to you and says, nope, you didn't fill this out, or nope, you didn't fill this out. That's, that's everywhere. So that system should be able to do that to say, well, here, you got to fill this part out too. And then are we going to get a timestamp back saying that we submitted that? And how does that happen with the first 50, you know, because this guy, this gentleman over here said, he's going to be there to get the first 50 so we can. So that's a, that's just a concern.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Morgan. I'm at 390 DeSante Bay Court. I'm at 390 Welch Avenue. But I do, I really understand how frustrating this process has been for that neighborhood. Five and a lot of commercial activity in a place where you come to find peace. We were a previous short-term rental owner-occupied unit, so we're right downtown. We had renters that would come and stay in our basement. And I can tell you, most of the people that we had were great at self-filtering, given that we're an owner-occupied unit. So we made that really clear in our listing. And the only issue we ever had with the 70 people we hosted is they left dishes out one time. So other than that, it's like if the owner is living on site, it tends to be that we're there to address all the concerns. I would say the first 20 minutes of your questions for Ton had a lot to do with enforcement and noise and timing and who's going to be there. So I'd love to see maybe an easier process for that owner-occupied unit to be available. I think that is it. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're the last speaker. Thank you. All right. Anyone else that wants to speak on this issue? Now is your time to let us know. Someone else? Okay. Then with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. And there are a few questions probably on that we're going to want to ask you, so I'm going to take them from there.
Sure.
So do you want me to go ahead and just start addressing some of those?
Yes.
Okay. So I can start off with the HOA and the covenants. So we will have, there is regulation, there is language within the proposed regulations that address that if you have, there could be covenants and that any covenants, of course, the town does not administer. So for HOAs, metro districts, that, that would be the HOA's responsibility or the metro districts. That being said, that if the town of Berthoud had our land use regulations governed, and so if an HOA, so an instance of where Haran Lakes may have previously, or the metro district, may have previously allowed their residents to have short-term rentals per their HOA covenants, that was a mistake on their part because that was in direct violation of the land use code administered by the town of Berthoud. So that was an unfortunate mistake that they made. So we do have within the regulations saying that of course you need to be aware of your HOA or your covenant regulations for the metro district, whatever it may be, HOA metro district. We also on the backend, the part of our seminal requirements will be that you have to furnish a letter from your HOA or metro district confirming that they are short-term rentals would be allowed within those regulations. If we receive a letter from a metro district or HOA that is stating that no, these are not allowed per our covenants, we would not move forward with the application. So we will have that. That is not something that we would write. That's not appropriate language for code. That's why we do have the language in there, those saying heads up. If you do have covenants running with the land, you need to be aware of those. But on the internal side, we will require documentation.
Let me, let me make sure I understand that. So what you're saying is if there are covenants that were recorded with that property that don't allow short-term rentals, and that, and there was an application that went to the town, town would deny that one.
Correct.
So, but not HO, we're not talking about HOA guidelines. We're talking about actual covenants.
Covenants. So whether that's administered by an HOA or a metro district.
Or a metro district. It was just a guideline or whatever from the HOA, let's say, or a guideline from the metro district. If it's not something that's a covenant that's recorded with the land, then that would really count.
And they would need to clarify that in their letter. And so that would, yeah, from the HOA directly. And then so, and to clarify then on Laramore County versus state versus town of Berthoud. The town of Berthoud regulates land use within the town, within incorporated town limits. Our regulations govern. We do not in any way, shape or form use Laramore County's underlining their zoning regulations. As they are Laramore County, they manage and they are, their regulations are applicable to unincorporated properties outside of town limits, city limits, what have you. So if you are a property that is within an annex to the town of Berthoud, the town of Berthoud municipal code, including the land use code, is applicable to your property and only those regulations are, when it comes to land use regulations, are applicable. So in no way, so if Laramore County has heavier hand on any land use regulation, that is Laramore County and has nothing to do with us. Our land use code governs properties within the town. And then to clarify, I think a little bit further on the bed and breakfast versus Laramore County's definition of hosted and non-hosted. So that was a decision that Laramore County made because just internal decisions that they felt needed to be clarified and they wanted to clean up, at that time, wanted to clean up the table. So they, they came up with a new definition of bed and breakfast inn, which was used then to be more of what you would think historically or your standard character, I think, characterization of a bed and breakfast where you go and you may have meals and you may share spaces with other guests and you may sit and commune with other guests. So they did a bed and breakfast inn. They then had hosted and non-hosted. And the hosted took over their definition of what was bed and breakfast. And that was to provide clarification. In their definitions, their bed and breakfast inn has a middle component, whereas their hosted is not. And then they had non-hosted, which would be a short-term rental. So again, but it goes back to, if you look at our definitions, we already have that. They were just, they chose to have that clarification to report to the county commissioners. So we have short-term rental is your non-hosted. And you have bed and breakfast under definition of Laramore, or the town of Berthoud Development Code, which would be your occupied or hosted. So again, and I want to reiterate is that no matter what we call it, we can call it something completely different, purple and black. And no matter what we call it, again, has no, doesn't matter how we define it in that if it goes always back to that taxing or assessing, no matter what we call it, Laramore County Assessor has their own guidelines to defining a use. So hopefully that helps. And so that's why we do not feel it necessary or at this time to modify the definition of bed and breakfast at this time. So the only thing that we are proposing within this draft regulations is just simply putting a maximum guest count. And that is to provide further clarification within our own development code so that we essentially have a tiered or layered lodging uses. So you would have your short-term rentals, you would have a bed and breakfast that would then allow slightly more guests because you do have the owner on site. So ideally, hopefully there would be less issue because you have somebody present at all times. And then if you exceed that maximum guest count for bed and breakfast, essentially you would then move on to the next tier, which would be an inn. An inn has a maximum of a number of guest rooms and then from an inn, you then go into a hotel. So it was a natural progression within our own development code to provide just clarification. And then.
Electronic submission?
Oh, yes. Thank you. So certainly we, again, on the backend where we're working out how the smels will look, what the packets will look like and the documents we will require as part of the application process. Like I said, it will be an application form. We have an MOU, which is for our deposits, that letter from the HOA. We have title commitment requirement. There will be an operations manual. There will be egress maps. There will be a site plan and likely floor plans. A lot of those components are because of, of course, on our inn from land use and having the correct, you know, authorization process in application to confirming ownership information, then to also ensuring that life safety from both Berthoud Fire as well as building code, they are getting the information they need to do their evaluation and to know. Because we will notify Berthoud Fire when we give an application so that they are aware. Because they do want to know where a short-term rental is because oftentimes they understand that they need to treat them slightly different. Because the guests obviously may not know the structure as well as the homeowner or, you know, or, or even the community in exiting or an emergency evacuation situation. And so those are conversations and those are things that we will collect as part of the application process. And because we do want to make sure that we have everything as best we can reviewed and considered. And so with electronic submittals, the idea as of right now, it won't be through any kind of software system or anything, a link or anything like that on our website. It will be a direct email to a specific email address. So whether that's me or as of right now, in my presentation, as you noted, we have our str@berthoud.org. So we may just maintain that and that's where everybody emails their application packets. So then, yes, you will absolutely get confirmation that when we receive, just letting you know that thank you, we're in receipt. And your email then of course will be time-dated, but we certainly, I did note that as part of what we say in our emails, we can certainly say, we received your email this date, this time.
That you could send a acknowledgement back.
Yes, we, yes, absolutely. And we make that, we try to do that with every application we receive. It's just to acknowledge receipt if we can, obviously process it right then and there, which generally we can't. And if I may, we, we accept land use applications all the time by email and we have never had anything gone awry. So that's a standard practice for the town.
And you sent, and with those two, you send it acknowledging, saying, we've received your submittal on distinct time.
And the 15 cap includes STRs and?
No.
No.
So bed and breakfast is a completely different use on our land use code. It requires a separate approval process. And yes, this is only for short-term.
Is there any context that we should be aware of of why study sessions haven't happened with the town board? If the answer is no, that's fine. If the answer is no, that's fine.
There was, with the Town Board of Trustees work sessions, um, generally, they, you know, comment, community had an opportunity to provide comments. Um, we were given a direction to continue moving forward and that, um, we've heard a lot of feedback that time is of the essence. Um, from the get-go, I have been very clear and transparent in that writing regulations and especially short-term rental regulations, is not a quick process. It can, in my experience, uh, can take anywhere from six months to a year, if not slightly longer. My experience with Lammert County, it took over a year to, and they already had regulations in place. Um, so it was an amendment to those regulations. As of right now, we're approaching, I believe, seven months. Um, so, but I, but the direction was that, um, to try to address this as completely as we could. Um, and, and again, to reiterate, you know, Town Board of Trustees understands and what I've said is that there truly isn't a one-size-fits-all. And it is very difficult to, I mean, to make sure, we're trying to cover all of our bases, of course. And enforcement, I do recognize, is a significant concern. And I know, I unfortunately don't know that there is an answer. And that we're hoping that the regulations we've created will at least, at least put that, that base in place that, and we're hoping that our faithful and our community members that they will abide by the rules and the regulations in place. We understand that it is not always the case. Um, but we have to go on trust and that the community do, will do the right thing and will manage their short-term rentals appropriately.
And I'm going to jump in on that. So there were several work sessions with the Town Board of Trustees on this subject. There was also a project website that, um, offered an opportunity to provide input and comments which influenced how the regulations, you know, which direction those regulations went. Again, um, Ton did receive comments from the public. And as she explained this evening, some of those regulations, um, and those requests were for a process that the town doesn't even have in place. And then some comments Ton did utilize to refine language and clarify intent in language. So there was a lot of opportunity for involvement and the proposed language has been on the website for weeks, if not months, as, as you're drafting the different drafts.
So the, so the draft, this draft, of course, was posted to our website when the agenda was posted. Um, and then the first draft, once it was available for the work session, once that agenda was posted, it was posted to the website. Uh, because generally, we want, you all see it at the same time. We don't, um, but yes, they're always out there, um, on, on the website, so.
And then as far as compliance goes, um, the town is not actively looking at every property and policing every property. Now, if there is a significant safety issue, let's say the town sees that a fence is falling down or there is, um, you know, derelict vehicles in the front yard, of course, the town is going to do something about that. But even with this process, like every other process and violation in the town, it is, we, we are dependent upon the citizens to call and submit a complaint about a property. So we are not driving around town, you know, looking, looking for problems every day. Compliance team is out there looking for very serious safety concerns, needs, things like that. Um, but a lot of the work that they do is complaint-driven.
Any questions of staff at this point?
So as it relates to complaints, uh, is there going to be dedicated number or person for these? I, I guess I'm, I'm trying, I, I know in the grand scheme of things, this is probably a very small, maybe a very small percentage of code issues, but, um, i- is there like a, an email address or something like that that it's going to funnel to that?
So.
So you kind of categorize it as well.
We do intend to create, um, from the Planning Department's website and, and possibly from Neighborhood Services, we'll have to have more discussions, but definitely on the Planning Department's website, we will have a link to a short-term rental page. Um, and, and there we will have a link to what already exists, is where you go to report a violation or a complaint. So you could go to Neighborhood Services and, and find that tab currently. But we will also have a link and it's just that it's a fillable form that is emailed directly to our co-compliance officer. With, you know, it's timestamped and all that good stuff. You can also remain anonymous. And so in discussions with our co, one of our co-compliance, or both of them, I, the other day, they felt that that would probably be the best route is to at least allow people to make complaints anonymously. Um, so, but unfortunately, there likely at this time will not be one dedicated individual. Um, unfortunately, as has been expressed to the Town Board of Trustees, we are a small staff. Um, and so our Neighborhood Services officers are managing and enforcing municipal code. So many components, not just land use regulations. They certainly do the best that they can, um, and, and they're managing. And we, we are lucky that we did just recently bring on one additional officer. So we now have a, a stronger team and so hopefully that will help. But yes, as Anne pointed out, this is, would be just one of the many things that they will be enforcing. But they, they do take it seriously. And I do have every faith that they will address as they come up.
And another reason for a reasonable cap on the number um, is for that compliance and check and making sure everybody's operating correctly. And if in three years, it's not an issue, we have wonderful operators, you never know if the cap could be raised. But starting with a manageable number so that we're setting the town staff as well as the operators up for success is what we thought would be the best first step.
Any questions of staff, commissioners? All right, so that brings us to deliberation. Someone want to start off?
I, I know, I'm just.
No, no, that's okay. All right, so, um, I think that for bed and breakfast, the problem is a little bit easier because you have, the owner needs to be onsite. That makes a huge difference. For the STR, um, I think we have a problem because, if there's a problem, there might be delays in reaction. And the problem keeps going on for the people surrounding the, the rental. So basically, I think we have three problems for the STR, which is the enforcement. It's the spreading of the, the 50 numbers in the town. Because, um, I understand that if, uh, you know, again, 50 licenses, this message will spread right away to, uh, I mean, amongst the owners and the, um, the, the consulting company managing that. And they will try to catch all the numbers as soon as they can and probably in the nicest location like the TPC or other places. And, uh, I think also we can do better about the 50 licenses. And I understand why we need to start with the number. But the, the way it's going to be distributed, again, I'm, I think it, there's a risk in the, um, in the, the value of that 50 number represents in the, in, um, in the future. And if you think that we already have 35, uh, STR, there's only 15 left, it's going to be a precious value for people wanting to do something. So my thinking is that, yeah, there might be some review on the, on the, on the process to, um, because we have a few holes in the, in the rectitude, as we say.
Yeah, I think that one of the most compelling aspects of the, I mean, there was a lot of compelling aspects of the public testimony, but something I kept hearing again and again was this distribution question.
The density.
Yeah. And so I, and because we're a planning commission of volunteers and not elected legislators, I don't know how much it's within our scope to propose like direct changes to this versus to recommend to the town board that they revisit this topic specifically. Is there anything that you can guide us on in terms of like what's appropriate for us in this case? Is it recommendations to the town board on policy or recommendations that they reassess?
Yeah, you can make a recommendation for, that you like the guidelines and you would also like them to consider a density or a setback, um, component. And then between now and the public hearing, the introduction, which is about a month, because we wanted to allow enough time to address any issues that might come up tonight, Ton could come up with some language and propose it for their packet for consideration.
Okay, so what you're saying is, as I understand it, we, we can provide those types of recommendations of different areas that we think need different, maybe some more thought, some, um, enhancement, um, that, and that kind of thing. And for our audience, you know, remember that we're an advisory group, we're volunteers, as Abigail said. So what, what our job is really is to hear what you have to say, provide certain types of, um, recommendations who we think that's warranted. Because obviously the town board makes the final decision. We only, we are, we're only advisory, we only advise them what we think. So, but what, and what you're saying is we can provide that, that these types of recommendations, like for example, about the distribution, about enforcement, and that's something that we, it seems to me that that was something I heard. That and the density were the two things I heard over and over again in our public testimony.
And it would be great if we could fix that tonight, but I, I think it is really complex, especially with, I mean, there are specific concerns with multi-unit dwellings. I, I heard that and I think that that is a very fair point as well. Yeah, so I, I don't think it's black and white necessarily, especially because if we start like prescribing exactly how many neighborhoods can have exactly how many Airbnb's, this is very complex and maybe not necessarily equitable. So it's, it's complicated and I think that it deserves revisiting, but.
Yeah.
I would, I would agree.
And I agree. And, and as far as the compliance is concerned, you know, to be fair to everyone out there, no one's done compliance on this right now, right? We don't have a process for it. So I think that that's something that needs to one, be created, two, managed and, and assessed along the way. Because, you know, like anything, whenever you're putting a new process in, you think you thought of everything and you haven't really thought of everything, right? And there's different scenarios and, and things that are going to pop up. But as far as it, you know, relates to, um, how you manage the compliance piece, you know, I think there's a couple of different components in there, right? Who, who manages it? How do you manage it? And what are the ramifications for people that continuously violate that? And, you know, quite honestly, um, I forget your name over there. But you, you mentioned there's tools out there that you can utilize to vet your, your renters, right? So, I mean, you, you don't want to penalize a, an owner that you've given a license to because they had one bad experience. But, but that should be a wake-up call. And, and somewhere along the lines, they should, they should be held accountable, number one, but number two, they, you know, you, you can't, you know, throw a one-strike-and-there-out type of thing, right? You know, there has to be, whether it's a penalty, you know, a fine or, or, you know, you know, and again, I don't know how egregious some of these things are because I do know, especially in the Zantea Court, uh, it got a little crazy down there. And, and I understand their situation because I live in that subdivision as well, but, um, it, it definitely, um, compliance and density are two big things. And how you develop the compliance issue is key and how you assess it somewhere down the road is also key. So I think that, that's, you know, compliance is not going to happen overnight. Okay, something needs to be addressed there.
I think what we're really focusing on there is how do you structure this so that people have the quiet enjoyment of their home? And that's what kept going through my head when I was listening to that, the testimony. And I think we've identified, I think, you know, I'm misconstruing our consensus here, someone say something, but I think what, what we're seeing is we definitely see density, we see, um, and we see this enforcement and compliance as two areas that probably we don't want to move too fast on, even though it's been seven months. I still think that we don't want to prematurely push things forward without as much, as much protection that we can put in, around those things as we can. So, but then, what, if, if we are saying, if, if, I'm wrong about this, but tell me, but I think what we're saying is we think this should, there needs to be some more thought about those two things. And so we want to recommend to the Town Board that that, those two things be revisited, some other language be looked at, some other things be added, and that kind of thing. But let's, if we were to give staff some direction in those two areas, I think, Nikki, you were starting with that, you were starting to hone in on that. But what direction, and, and start with density, what type of direction would we give them? Now, we can't, as you said, Abigail, you're right, we can't tonight come up with specific language. But what direction would we give them there? Let's, starting with density.
Yeah, I think that Ton has already done significant research on the ways that other towns have dealt with setbacks. And I think that you said that you've discussed that with the town board and these kinds of, um, sessions. Maybe, yeah, I keep saying the word revisiting, but maybe this is just worth kind of like digging up these kinds of examples again, um, just to get a scope of what is done other places. And I don't know how much time was spent on this before, so I don't want to create too much more work for, for anyone really. But I, I think that's the direction I, just because that seems like that's where there's precedent, um, at least from.
I think like single homes and, you know, multi-unit homes or I tell homes. There's probably two different roles.
I agree. We're thinking the same thing, that we need to, we need to look at two different directions there, sort of. Is there some language that for maybe multis and then some language for single? Other direction on density that we'd want to, to be able, or at least ideas to give staff?
I don't know, I, and as we're talking about, um, multiverse and single family, I'm wondering if maybe, I don't know if we want to tie it to zoning, so this is just an idea, but maybe like connections between different guidelines for like R1 versus R2. I don't know if that's been explored at all. But that to me starts to sound like what we're talking about, um, which is the, the actual like density of these zoning properties and what that means for how far apart they can be. It's getting kind of detailed, but.
So like for instance?
Like a 500 feet for a single, for R1 and then a, you know.
And then like say R4, which is our mixed-use residential year.
Nah, but that's, I mean, especially when you get to apartments, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, they're not included, they're already thrown out, so.
So multifamily, yeah, apartment complexes are not what we propose.
And then, and then as far as, you know, it relates to, um, enforcement, compliance, I don't know, I mean, I.
I don't know the relationship between the Town Board and the neighborhood compliance, like how much directive do they actually have over this department? So I think, yeah, it's, it's a little bit hard to say.
Do we need to think, and, and maybe this is going down the wrong path, but do we need to think about certain empowerment for them? They have the investigation, obviously, authority to investigate a complaint. If they feel a complaint is valid, should they have a different kind of, um, authority as far as fines and that, and that kind of thing? I, and I, and I'm not sure, maybe Ton, you can enlighten us, is that something that has been discussed with the Town Board previously, like the study sessions?
It has not. And I, I don't, I can't even speak to you. I don't know. I think that would be modifying and adjusting potentially other.
I don't know, I think that would be modifying and adjusting potentially other.
Probably other code areas.
Yeah, that would not be a part of, I guess, this. This adoption. And that would be, that would have, we would have to look, I think, closer at how neighborhood, I have the abilities of our. Services officers. And how they do code enforcement. Because it truly is my understanding that there are limited things that they can actually administer fines, like parking, I think is one of them. But I think they're very limited, and so that's why we're also limited here. And again, I, the reason behind the business license. Component, because we do have a lot more to do to review both that, just even on an annual basis, based upon complaints. Than if we were to do a land use approval, because then that, that's a much more complex to review both.
Maybe the suggestion, and tell me if you all think this is a little crazy, but maybe the suggestion to the town board is to look at. Other enforcement mechanisms, and maybe, maybe if there are. Component, if even if they do have to change another part of the municipal code, is it fines? Is it more faster revocation? You know, if there are there certain things that you automatically would say cause a cause a revocation if it's if it's verified? Yeah, and. Should we, should we at least have something like that? So, some ideas that would, so people feel more comfortable that someone. You know, damages a neighbor's property. Or that there's a way that they, for example, that they know that there will be some type of enforcement or some type of sanction or something like that.
And that sounds sort of like what I think Commissioner Semedales was getting at, too, was kind of like codified process. And I don't know if that exists for other parts of code enforcement. Where it's actually documented, like what the steps are that they go through when they get a complaint.
But that was similar to like the Lerner County kind of thing, you know, but.
What we could do is we can ask for clarification from the code compliance team. Maybe even ask them to attend the trustees meeting to go over that in a public forum. What the current process would look like. And then if there would be a desire by the town trustees to change other chapters of the town code. Because we're, we're only dwelling in chapter thirty. And so if there are other areas of the municipal code that might need to be changed. Then they can provide that direction based on what they're hearing. So I think, you know, providing town trustees with guidance to. Look closely at the compliance. Process for short-term rentals, especially when it comes to revocation, complaints, frequency of complaints. The ability to respond when you have a, it's a transient business, right? It's a transient, they're not there a long time. So how do you regulate that? And some of this is, you know, Ton, Ton's research. There are issues with compliance throughout the country because of the nature of.
But that's where the owner has to be held accountable. Those tools that, you know, vet renters and.
Right, and the property management, and that's why, that's why the code is being proposed, that the property management has to be able to respond within a certain period of time.
But I think, I mean, granted, and I get, and I get that, and they need to be held responsible. But I, but I do think. There has to, there's not, not gonna be any perfect way to do this enforcement, there's just no way. And I could see where it probably in other areas has caused issues. But I do think we can be a little bit more specific about certain things that, certain things that we know are severe enough that, for example, that would cause an automatic revocation. So first of all, it gives warning, it gives a warning to the property management and as well as the owner. These things happen, you're done, you know? And it then makes people feel more protected. You know, they they know too that if these things happen, these people are not gonna be there to cause issues in, you know, near their home, you know? And I think that might, I I think that will will go a long way to to start that whole process of gaining as much protection as we can get. Even though this is not gonna be a perfect.
And I think too, one of the ongoing issues with enforcement is also the perceived, a perceived issue. And there is some validity at times with certain complaints. I think noise is a prime example. We have a disturbing, in our municipal code, there is disturbing pieces, and that's where that is located. And when you do read that language, there is some. It's about my perception or somebody else's perception of what could potentially be noise, but may not be the same as my perception. So I think that too is one of the ongoing challenges with enforcement on short-term rentals.
Yeah, and it leads to an a- another issue is that who's gonna state that, you know, who's gonna come and say, oh, yeah, it's too noisy. I think that only police can do that.
Yeah, I I feel for them having to go and do this because they're.
Everyone's a neighbor and you can have a bad one that just has a party one night, and okay, hold it down, I get it.
But if someone does this every weekend. Whatever, I think at one point we have to say, that's a suspension for this long. If it happens again, it's a revocation, you know? And I think if we were a little bit more specific about some of those things, I think. Were in my neighborhood, I feel better about that, I'm sure, hopefully, it would help some of these people feel better about this. And it tells them what what they can expect and it tells the owner what they can expect.
Yeah, so everyone's kind of put on notice.
And just a general comment that I do think it's very impressive that this conversation has gotten to this point where the primary concern is enforcement. Because I do think that this has been a lot of work for the town board and the staff and for the public to be involved in this process. So I, I would definitely appreciate everyone's time and effort in making this. Work, because I think, you know, no one wants there to be no more weddings in Berthoud, right? I don't know, maybe too, but hopefully, it's, it's a scene that there's consensus around, there's a way that we can make this work. Under the right regulation.
And, yeah, and I I applaud staff for the work that you've put in, because I know this has been a lot. And although I think I also applaud the public for bringing up the issue. And being willing to walk down the path here and try to come to some accommodations. So, let's try to, let's try to then summarize this, what we think our action is and what we're telling the town board, because we said a lot here. And I know staff, if you can help us with that, I wanna make sure we can, we can verbalize this in a way. Help them understand what we're saying and help the public understand kind of what we're asking them. So, so we would start with, I guess the motion would be that we would. Pass these along, pass the, you know, approve and pass these along to them. But we believe that there's work that needs to be done in certain areas, so we would start with, A, the density and dispersment. And we said several things there. We said first that we think there probably should be some limitation, but they probably need, it needs to be considered either based on zoning. Or on multi and single, however we do that. So that first part of that direction. Does that make sense? And then the second component being enforcement, that we need to look at more specificity enforcement measures. That are appropriate, whether that be in certain situations, certain defined situations that are so severe that automatic revocation, suspension, whatever that is. That sum that up, or am I missing, what am I missing here?
I I can try to make a motion, I think. And then we can assess, unless people have other comments.
I think those are the key. But but that's gonna be, I mean, I'm I'm comfortable with that.
I am, I am too, I think.
Cause I.
It it's gonna be, I think, any number you give it is gonna be a management issue for a while until we get, we gets. And we're probably gonna have to make changes, if this, if this all gets all the way through and at one point, I I'll bet you, it's kind of what Ton was saying. In a year or so, we'll be making more changes. It's not gonna be perfect.
And and there was another thing that I was wondering, if someone has a license and doesn't use it, what happens?
It just goes unused. If you paid for it, it goes unused.
Actually, it was pretty hard in fact, that you can't really determine what people do with their property if they have a license to do something.
I mean, we don't want people selling, you know, kind of like on the black market, that's, that's key, right? I think that was my, one of my issues, like.
A license would be tied to a property.
Right, right, but but again, it's that whole ownership thing, right? You you don't want people, you know, you could have family members and they have six, seven. Properties and they just keep changing names, putting them in trust, moving things around, so that to me is a big issue. So, and then on B, on Ben breakfast, are there any limits?
Like on the number? We we don't currently have any limits on. Yeah, I don't know that we've had any, in the time I've been with the town, we haven't had any applications for a Ben breakfast. But, yeah, no limitations.
But there will be requirements.
They're already had defined on the code and on our use table, and there is an approval process. I think generally it's a site plan review in most instances.
They're doing motion smithy. Which is hard when we come up with these ad hoc motions, yes. Do you want, do you want to take? Do you wanna take a bio break?
Please.
Can we make our motion and do our vote and then? Do you have that much time?
Oh, sorry, I wasn't answering. We can take a break with this.
Oh, well, if you're ready to make the motion, we can do this quickly and then take a bio break before the next.
Okay. Okay, I move to forward our recommendation of approval of the amendments contained in ordinance for short-term rentals. With appendices A and B to the Town Board of Trustees. The rationale for approval is that the proposed regulations provide transparent expectations for establishing and maintaining a short-term rental in the town of Berthoud. And supports the town's community identity outlined in the twenty twenty-one update to the comprehensive plan. We also recommend that the Town Board of Trustees. Investigate. Specific enforcement measures, particularly time of response and revocation of licenses. So I guess that would be one, and then two, the distribution of short-term rental units within the town. Including investigation of setbacks and differences between single and multifamily housing.
Do we have a second of that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Semedales seconds. Larry, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Hoffman's.
Yes.
Secretary Semedales.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Chair Anderson.
Yes, so that passes unanimously. I I also wanna thank those that came to testify. I I think it's a difficult thing to do, and y'all did really well, I appreciate that. So, I always think your participation is really key in what we do, so thank you very much. All right, so that brings us to taking about a ten-minute break.
Let's take a five minute break.
Five minute break? We are taking a semi-agreement for five minutes.
And I don't know, my battery is super low.
I mean, it's just an interesting perspective. This is too hard. It's, it takes no time to code in. You guys are asking all right questions.
We really appreciate that, and it's the first time that's happened.
What what do we do?
And we've had them all on our.
And we've had all ten percent, we have one hundred percent of the ten percent.
I've walked by there, I know.
Corn Moody's.
Yes, I've heard about that.
It's crazy.
I haven't heard about that, but I heard about.
We were talking about that earlier. So Ton's gonna bring it up?
Cause my laptop is about ready, it loses battery.
Okay. Is yours too? We can just go ahead and get it set up.
That's good. I just won't say anything.
It's late.
At eight? Too much bicycle waiting, see? She's up, she's up every morning like by five, that is. Just understand where it, we walk in the morning, we have a, we're three of us that walk. She's already. Stuff done, she's ready to go, I'm like, Cassie, you're making me tired.
In December, if you wanna be on your bike at seven or something, you need to be awake at five. Breakfast and digest a little bit and then you're good.
I'll I'll see you out at seven, we'll be out walking. He's got his chips.
Oh, that's what I should do. That's not for us, alright.
Thank you. My husband, my husband has got his chips. Alright, we'll get our meal and then we'll get down to the javelin.
She has put it far from me, so I can.
There you go.
You can roll it, whatever, you know. Okay, with that.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Yeah.
We appreciate you.
We very much appreciate you. See, and we actually, we got staff, made sure you got fed too, so that's that's a positive, right?
I think you intimidated everybody.
Why don't I get these?
Thank you.
Bye, thank you, thank you.
Okay, with that, we're back in session. Let's go to our last substantive item on the agenda, there are the amendments to chapter thirty of the municipal code. Anne Johnson, Director of Berthad Community Development Department, will make the staff presentation. Director Johnson.
Chair Anderson and members of the planning commission, is it okay if I make this presentation here or section there?
Absolutely.
So, um, again, if we can go advance to the second slide, for the members of the audience and those that may be here, this is different from an a standard planning case. Um, staff will give a presentation, there will be a public hearing, you can decide how long for each member of the public to provide testimony. Once everyone has provided that testimony, the public hearing will be closed and then there will be a time for discussion and voting. So moving on to the substance of what's being proposed to you tonight, there are four issues. Number one is, in the current land use code, there are four different tables. Those four different tables have a list of what type of land uses are considered appropriate in all of the different zone districts. When the town adopted the components of the 2021 Comprehensive Plan, the conservation district was developed, the suburban and the urban districts were developed, and each of those had a different land use tables. When we work with the public and somebody comes and says, I have X type of use I would like to do, staff has to look at table one, table two, table three, table four, to determine what zone districts can you have those uses in. Also, the tables for the suburban and the urban, um, districts had columns with in the urban district, when you have condos, you can have these uses, and in the urban district, when you have townhomes, you can have these uses. And it was, it was further splitting those uses in that district, whereas the intent of that district was to have mixed uses. And so in one block, you could have two, two attached single family, an apartment building, detached single family, and then a row of townhomes, and so it was wanting to regulate down to the individual units, which was very difficult to do. So we took a step back and we'd like to regulate land uses within the zone districts. So what you see, the bulk of what you have tonight are two things regarding this one item. We had land uses listed on the land use table that were not defined. We need to define what our expectation is for that particular land use, and oftentimes the definition also needed an update. So we've proposed those updates. So now every use that's listed on the land use table will be defined. Then we've combined the land uses in tables three, 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 five, three, seven, and three, ten into one big land use table. So it's going to be consolidated and everything will be together. So that is item one. Within item one, on the land use table, for instance, um, the the terminology for dwellings, the word dwelling is the first word now, so that in the definition section, because the the definitions are alphabetized, all of the dwellings will appear together because the def, because dwelling, single family detached, dwelling, single family attached, dwelling, multifamily, it will all appear as dwelling, followed by the defining term. There are terms, um, like in, there's flex buildings that were defined, but flex building really, it's the conversion from residential to non-residential or multifamily would be reviewed through the site plan or the special use permit process. And so just having a flex building listed, it it's it's really the use. It's not a flex building, but it is a building for commercial enterprise or a building for restaurants. It's not really a flex building, and so we deleted that because it's it doesn't make sense. Then there are, um, like suburban, commercial, urban, commercial, administrative office and research facilities. We took those out for suburban and commer- and urban because they're, um, a zone and it, you don't need to list it in the land use table because it's already recognized as a zone. And then, for instance, administrative office and research facilities, research facility is an industrial use and office administrative is covered in other land use listings. So we, staff, um, Administrator Kirk, um, Senior Planner Helen Brand, and I spent a lot of time just going through each individual definition and making sure there isn't a conflicting definition and really pairing these down so that it's more specific. And then such as banks and financial institutions, right now, we don't even allow ATMs or drive-throughs, so we thought that we should allow that. So we added that. Um, we, um, on business offices, we further explained that that's business slash professional offices and further define that down to like professional offices for attorneys, dentists. And then there's another definition, then like a mixed use building. And then there is another definition, like for, um, contractor shops. So rather than having one definition that was a big bucket, we refined the definition so that they were being in the zone district where the intent is. You wouldn't want a contractor shop in the residential zone district necessarily. You know, for like a, uh, appliance repair shop. So those are the main changes, um, that we made. Oh, and then also some, some uses such as oil and gas, home occupations, allowed marijuana businesses, those are further defined in other sections, so we referenced that in the table as well. So not only do you look for the definition, but hey, there's another section in the code where you're going to need to look for those regulations. Just again, to be transparent and help the public. So that's it for item one. Do you have any questions on item one? Alright.
So, you know, I was looking at this research and development one, I just, I've come from the back on. So, is that strictly research and development? What if you're running a business, it's research, development, sales, marketing, all in one building? I don't know, I it just, I I I got the point, but I'm like, well, what if you have other activities going on?
That's fine, so. Yeah, if you have a research and development and that's, and let's say you're doing, um, plastic injection molding or something. You're, you're actually producing something, you're warehousing, you're production, but you also have your business office and your marketing office, yeah, we 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 anticipate that. But if your main business is warehousing, then you need to be in the appropriate zone district, but we know that there will be other functions going on in that building.
So you can do more than research and development, but you have to do research and development to do something.
Yes.
So it's your kind of your primary business, okay.
Yeah, see?
I know.
So are there standards for that? So in other words, if fifty percent of what you do is research and development, then that's what it is, or does it, I mean?
So write a little biotech, they'll do that.
Aside that, I mean.
They'll do research, development, but they'll also have sales, right? Cause they have to, they have to generate something.
So you look at what is the major, maybe, maybe major purpose of that between your building?
Alright. Okay.
And it's usually based on the most intensive use. If you have somebody that's doing an industrial use, well, we we have cabinet, cabinet manufacturing in Berthad. They're manufacturing, they're warehousing, they're storing, they're shipping, but they also have sales and they also have a design component. But the most intensive use is the manufacturing and shipping and warehousing, so those other components just fall in. We regulate on the, on the most intensive part of that business.
Espinel is everything I'm trying to get, we do this.
And we get rid of traditional, I saw. What was that, KN or whatever that was?
Oh, yes, 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 so that's coming, that's coming up, that's coming up.
Ooh.
Hello, we're stuck here.
Alright, okay, so, thank you, thank you.
Okey dokey, so then moving on to item two then, um, we need to make reference to this new consolidated land use table throughout the, throughout the chapter thirty, because oftentimes it will say, if you want a use in this zone district, please refer to chapter three point five. Well, now we're not gonna have table three point five, we're just gonna have one table. So it's going through now, cleaning up all of those references to these scattered tables and now just making a reference to one table.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Is there, are there questions about that? Um, and then another thing in that is, um, right now in that land use table, there are two types of uses. One is a site, is a use that's allowed by right, but you still need to go through that administrative site plan process. And another is a use that's more intensive that goes through the special use permit or used by special review process. So we're just clarifying the intent of those processes in the the section for used by special review and site plan. It's just clarification. And so that's it for item two.
You know, I I did, maybe I, this was part of my, but where you have all this stuff in red on page one of twenty and two of twenty, it kind of defines what certain things are.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's just, I mean, that's just a high level, that doesn't include everything, does it?
No, and so you would have to look in the definition of, alright, so what is, what is this, um, a childcare home? So you go to this, the definition of what a childcare home is. We get the, a better, a better example is what is industrial heavy or industrial light?
Yeah.
And so then you refer back to the definition section and you figure out, okay, where do you fall?
Yeah, cause I, you know, that whole R and D thing, I went back and I'm like, what did they define that?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be like industrial light or industrial heavy or manufacturing or warehousing.
Yeah, okay.
Okey dokey, then, going on to item three, which Tom touched on tonight, is, um, the traditional neighborhood zone district was a zone district that was contemplated at one time prior to the 2021 comp plan update. That comp plan update created the zone districts of commercial, I'm not, I'm sorry, suburban and urban. Those two zone districts really take the place of the traditional neighborhood district. And that zone district has been in Berthad for several years, and we don't have a single property that is even zoned, traditional neighborhood. So if we don't have any takers on a zone district that's been there for a decade, and now we have a more flexible, comprehensive suburban and urban zone district, we just are suggesting we go ahead and delete traditional zone district because no one's using it and we feel we get a better product with urban or suburban. And so there's lots of language in here we have to delete and, you know, I I can guarantee you I've missed some. Um, any questions on item three? Alrighty, so then on item four, um, one of the action items in the Comprehensive Plan, we have about three pages of action items, is to take some of the vision items from the Comprehensive Plan and bring them into code so that we have a mechanism to enforce the vision. And one of the items is to update the code to protect views of lake shores and other key watersheds. To update the land use code to support and define what does transect planning mean? And then update the land use code to support affordable housing. So in the, in that section in your packets, you'll see, um, three big areas where we are suggesting to change the height in the residential one and two zone districts from forty to go down to thirty-five. Reference environmental sensitive areas and the buffer in the parks, trails, and open space section and commercial and industrial buffering and screening, and then in environmental, um, considerations. Also, um, the code was referencing a nineteen seventy-five National Wetland Inventory, and we've just went ahead and deleted that because we can, we can find a more updated current inventory. So that was for the protection of sensitive areas. Um, the transect based planning approach, um, not only are we lucky to have Tom, who is an expert on, um, short term rentals and brings a wealth of experience from Laramie County and all of the research that she did there, but she also helped define what transect based planning is. Because you have Euclidean zoning, which is these zone districts, and we have Euclidean zoning in the town of Berthad and that was one of the first zoning, um, tools that ever went into play in the United States. And so you have all of these different zone districts, and that's Euclidean zoning. Transect based zoning considers that Euclidean zoning, it considers some form based zoning, but it's more based on what is the use, the feel, how we're merging from one area to another area and combining all, all those uses in those special different districts.
Right to that, okay, alright, thanks.
So, so Tom created this definition for us, it's based on use and function. And then the last thing, um, there's a lot of of work in the Comprehensive Plan that talks about housing. And we're just proposing a minor change to, um, accessory dwelling units in this code change because in light of giving the grant from DOLA to do our housing analysis and assessment, we thought, even though the comp plan is is great and it has some good, good ideas in it, we wanted to have a fresh approach and, you know, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, looking at how does our code support affordable housing? What can we be doing? And Berthad is very fortunate to have an outstanding land use code. There are a lot of things that just need to be reorganized and refined, but we have amazing content and again, a great Comprehensive Plan. So we want the new consultant that's going to come in and talk about housing um, to be able to really take, take a look at what was envisioned in twenty twenty-one and bring it forward. So mi- minor adjustments tonight, you'll see more. So with that, that completes staff's presentation and an outline of the changes that are being proposed. Honestly, not substantive changes, a lot of reorganization, redefinition. Of course, deleting that traditional neighborhood district because we don't have any. That, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioners, questions? Director Johnson? Uh, Director Jones?
You know, in the one table, three point one, like, I'm just not really sure what this means, but uh where it says maximum building height, there's little, like under R four, it says fifty and there's a little box there. What's that little box mean? Because there's like other ones that have two and three boxes.
Can you please tell me, um, Mr. Semenov?
Page fourteen of twenty.
Okay, thank you.
I was just curious. I'm assuming that's. But there's like these little boxes and as you go down, like I'm looking under R four. It says fifty.
Oh, that's your, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I was supposed to.
Is that supposed to designate something?
Do you mind if I just come over here and see? I'm not seeing that and that doesn't do anything.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, so that's a, these are footnotes? Oh, okay, so, oh, those boxes.
Yeah, I just want all those boxes.
So the print that you have is not accurate. So that, that print, um, that print, that little box actually doesn't exist. So for some reason, there was, um, there was something that just did not transition through here. So something with the computer program?
Yeah.
So on here, we'll have like an asterisk, where there, there's another footnote thirty-three. Yes, so those, those boxes don't exist, this does and you can have.
Oh, no, no, that's good. I just, without a key, it doesn't matter.
I didn't even notice that when I was looking at the report, but now you have your own.
We have Nick.
Yeah, we have Nick.
Yes.
No, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Then with that, we need to open the public hearing. The hearing is now open regarding to these code amendments. Anyone who'd like to speak, please come to the lectern and state your name and address. Okay, no one's coming up to speak, so we will close the public hearing. Okay, Commissioners, now is our time to deliberate. And/or make a motion. I think most of these things are necessary and, and yeah. I appreciate the work that went into trying to call them out and, and rework things and redo the tables.
Yeah, I, I think there's a lot of work. I don't think people really understand a lot of work.
Yeah.
With all the references, you know, you kind of talk about it. Um, I've done a bunch of legal reviews. Right? Um, yeah, there's a lot of work involved, so I think it, it looks really good. I think, yeah. No questions on my behalf.
No question.
Mr. Hoffman, Commissioner Smith? Pretty good? All right, I don't need to have any questions either. So with that, I would entertain a motion. We can find your parole.
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion.
I know, my pages are all upside down now.
I know, I screwed mine up. Oh, here we go. Okay, uh. Uh, I move to forward a recommendation of approval of the, um, to the Board of Trustees for the proposed changes to chapter thirty, section three of the Berthoud Municipal Code as presented by staff. This recommendation of approval is outlined in the attached ordinance thirteen forty-two, series twenty twenty-four and includes supporting information in the ordinance attached.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Semenov made the motion and Commissioner Hoffman seconded. Carrie Lee, please take the roll.
Sorry. Yes.
Secretary Carrie Semenov?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair person Anderson?
Yes, so with that, the motion passes. All right. Thank you. Next, I am on our agenda with the staff reports.
All right, so just really quickly. Wybelle went to the, on, on June eleventh, the Town Board of Trustees, Tom presented the Wybelle Neighborhood Master Plan and Change of Zone and it was approved as your, per your recommendation. The Revere Neighborhood Master Plan and Change of Zone was denied and so they will have to come back with a new application if they want to develop all their property. We do not have any time limits. They could submit tomorrow, they could submit in two years, but they will have to resubmit a new application based on what they heard from the trustees. Some of the comments were about traffic, that they like more commercial, they don't want traffic, they want it all commercial. There, there's just a lot of, lot of discussion. Um, then the RFP for air, with Airs and Associates was approved and they will be our consultant to work through the housing project. So we will start working with them, they are having a kickoff meeting with staff next week. So we will get a schedule and some ideas of what we're going to talk about. Um, on July eleventh, there will be no planning commission and so you will have a break. Then on July twenty-third, the Town Board will hear the first run of short-term rentals. The second will be on August thirteenth. Planning Commission on July twenty-fifth um will be an update on the, on the implementation of the comprehensive plan, that all the action items and how we're, what we're doing to implement that. Um, the Town Attorney will also be present to talk about motions. Making a motion for approval, motion for approval with conditions and denial. And we may be ready for a land use case, we don't know yet, but we might have something. If not, we'll still have the good um discussion items. Then on the eighth of August, um Upstate Audrey Herbison and perhaps Rich Warner and Walt Elish from um the town will be giving a presentation on just what they do for economic development and the importance of housing to economic development. Um, we may have a, will probably have a land use case in August, August eighth, maybe? Yeah. Um, and then I had wanted to introduce David Pond.
But he left.
He left. Um, a new land, um, new planning commissioner was appointed on Tuesday.
Oh.
And he was in the audience, he was in the back row. Um, and David comes with a, he founded Kellison Corporation, which is a really large HOA um management company.
Wow.
And so he will have some great metro district HOA background. Um, so that will be helpful. And Chair Anderson, did you want to add anything you were?
No, I, I think.
Into your role to that interview?
Yeah, I think he was very, um, I mean, he's had a lot of experience um being in meetings with homeowners, you know, both happy ones and ones that weren't so happy, Dallas. Um, and so I think that's helpful. He knows how to deal with, you know, um, public meetings. He says he's had to deal with applying. One of the questions I always ask is, um, have you had experience applying like standards and laws and rules? You know, um, to specific situations? Yes, I've had lots of experience with that, you know, obviously because he's business and that kind of stuff. So I, I was pretty, I was impressed with that.
And so I anticipate him being here on the twenty-fifth of July and we will do an orientation with him the weekend of the fifteenth of July.
Just don't know when you.
Yeah, and other than that, that is it. But again, um, the amount of work that went into the short-term rental regulations is tremendous and I really would like to thank Tom for all the work.
Thanks to the staff, P U N, Tom, and to Terry, who's always uh hidden behind a computer, but he does a lot.
Three computers.
And they do accept cupcakes, so.
So anyway, but thank you all as well. And this, this, um, this particular planning commission is outstanding and you all do such a great job with deliberation. Um, won- wonderful, wonderful to be working with you. Staff feels very supportive and we really appreciate you.
Thank you, we appreciate you as well, as you can tell.
I think we're pretty lucky to have you guys.
Yes.
Because you guys, you know, I've, I've been to a bunch of different types of meetings, but you guys kind of have your act together.
Absolutely. I just love that you're, you're regulatory nerds like me, so, you know.
And I see a vision, which is kind of nice. It's, it's nice to see something. That's great.
All right.
Well, that, does, do any of you have anything that you want to discuss as far as any reports or anything that you want to talk about?
You know.
I know you want to use the.
You know, the one thing, so this might just be me, okay? So when I go, when I leave here and I drive home, there's that new gas station on the corner of Maverick and Maverick. In the back, they pile all kinds of crap.
Oh.
Okay, so when you're driving by, you could see all these blue things and red things all piled back there. I, again, it's an eyesore to me. It's, I know, it's an eyesore. I just, you know, I walk by, you know, because I'll do a walk and I'll walk by there, I'm like, don't they have a better place to put that stuff? I don't know if there's an issue or a co-issue with that.
You know what, you can contact our co-compliance officer.
Okay.
Either Miles or Teresa and they would be happy to go by and take a look at that.
Will do.
Mark is dying to.
No, 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 no. Yeah, but, so, but I have one question.
Now he's calling us off.
Stay away from that, because it's going to hurt. So when I, when I bicycle and I go to the stoplights, if there's no car behind me, they don't let me go because they don't detect my, my bicycle. So I remember in California, there was a spec- specific place on the road where you go with your bike and you're detected by the stoplight and then they give you the. So that would be an interest, interesting upgrade for the signs. In particular, the Berthoud uh Main Street and then the one on two eighty-seven.
And like, I'll press the button, is that?
Oh, yeah, but then you need to, you know, when you have the keys and everything, it's difficult, you know? And um, and also at, at two eighty-seven, every time I cross, there's tons of debris over there and uh, so if, if it's possible, yeah, because there's accidents and then they put the debris on. And I have to write on that, so if we can do something for that, that would be great. And then I declare the session.
Personal grievance time is over.
Do it, no, so, all right, so we, uh, are we a consensus to adjourn? All right, we're adjourned, you want to hit it?
No, it's you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to buy you a little one.
Yeah, please. I, I think my grandson has one. I should drop it off for him.
And it keeps, and it keeps to be a doctor.
I think it was Mark. No, my boys, when they were little, always said this to the family. What are we talking about, the, the second, the second to adjourn? Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can say me.
Bye-bye, thank you.
There is a pill down there?
Yes, thank you.
I think it might be I've robed.
Oh, yeah.